Good evening Wakefield and welcome to this special school committee meeting on this Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that a small group of us are in studio, social distancing, but this is a virtual meeting via Zoom and broadcast on WCAT's Facebook Live page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, I'd like to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. The purpose of this meeting is for Superintendent Lyons to provide information for Wakefield's reopening plans. Per the agenda, the presentation will include a review of the preliminary reopening plans the district has submitted to DESI, a review of the summary sent to parents and teachers, and a review of the reopening teamwork at each level, and lastly, the district's recommended preliminary reopening calendar and model. With permission from this body, I would like to suggest that we hold our questions and comments until Superintendent Lyons completes each presentation, and you will see that in the slides as well. And with that, I'd just like to hand it off to Superintendent Lyons.
Good evening. It's nice to be in studio. It makes us feel like we're getting closer to getting back to school, so it feels pretty good. And we're here socially distanced from one another, obviously taking precautions as well. So thank you very much for joining us. So we have a slideshow this evening that will be posted on our website after our show this evening. We also will post the report, the preliminary report that we sent out earlier today, which describes our schedules at each level and describes the work of the reopening team. I'd like to start off just by talking about, you know, context setting. And so it's really critical for us not to lose sight of the fact that Massachusetts is still in a state of emergency and has really done an exceptional job taking safety precautions, wearing masks, participating in hand washing and hand hygiene, and being as socially distant as people can be from one another. It really shows in terms of our community transmission data, and it really shows here in Wakefield. And so our latest data in our last few weeks, we are below 1%, right? 1% kind of transmission rate, which is really exceptional overall in the state. But in regard to setting the context, I just want to be clear that, you know, safety is our first priority, and reopening schools in a way where we're taking safety precautions and adults will be provided protective gear, and students will be wearing masks as well. And there'll be more detailed information on that as we move through our plans. But people being well, and as we prepare to return, you know, we have the important role and everyone has a hand and a role to play in making sure that we keep not only ourselves safe, but keep each other safe, right? And so we'll talk a little bit about that. You know, other factors to consider in regard to the information that we're presenting this evening. So one of the things that we've learned in being in a remote model this past spring is that, you know, we did a good job this past spring, but there were some shortfalls that we had with a lot of students. You know, some students at different levels had a great deal of difficulty participating in remote learning, and we've learned quite a bit from doing that this past spring, and which leads us to the point that there's really no substitute for in-person instruction, right? It's not only the learning that takes place and the instruction that takes place, but there's also the social benefit of students being with one another, learning with one another, and being in relationships with one another. And students have been a part, and the social isolation that has been caused from this pandemic has been significant. It's been significant not only for our students, and it has affected them significantly, but it has also affected our teachers, our faculty, and our staff as well. And so those are just some things that, you know, we feel is important to kind of bring up in regard to setting a context before we get into the reopening work that we've been assigned to do by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but also to kind of share just some idea that we acknowledge the fact that there is no substitute for in-person instruction. And so one of the things that we're thinking a lot about is educational equity, right? And we've talked about equity almost as a core value in everything that we do. You know, the equity has come up in this past spring when we've discussed issues about racism and how people are perceived and how people are treating one another. We've talked about equity in terms of goal-setting. We've also talked about equity in terms of not just the redistribution of resources, but equity in regard to outcomes for kids, right? We need to be attentive to really thinking about, you know, equity not just as a redistribution of resources in that some populations of students need more support or more resources, but we need to think about what achievement means for those students. And at the heart of all of that is we know that when we discuss this premise, we know that we need to have relationships with students and families. And so for example, in thinking about remote instruction and the possibility of having part of a hybrid model or part or moving into a remote model, we're really challenged by the idea of engaging students in a remote model without having relationships with them, right? So we know, for example, our kindergartners haven't even been in our schools. Our teachers have yet to meet those students, and we could potentially be working with them in a remote situation where we need to really think about how we might structure that so that we can make relationships first, not only with our kindergartners, but with all of our students before we're engaging them in teaching and learning. And so I shared here a link to Richard Milner's work that really talks about equity as an outcome and not within a framework. And we'll share more about that as we move into the spring. The objectives for this evening are to describe our reopening team process and to share the three plans that we created, that we were assigned to create at the Department of Education, to share staff and parent survey data. We're going to share the plans that we created and the feasibility of executing each plan, and then we're going to end with a final recommendation. We know that there's no perfect plan. I'm going to say that right up front. With every plan that we've worked to create, we know that there are challenges, and there are also positives of each. And then we're going to talk a little bit about outlining safety protocols and preparation and the additional planning considerations that we need to continue to make as we move into August. So at the bottom of our next slide, you'll see a continuum for reopening models. In early June, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, asked all superintendents and all administrative teams to create three models, and in creating those three models, to assess the feasibility of doing, of executing each model. They have asked us, when I say they, state leaders have asked us to really give some serious thought to this idea that if we are reopening the economy and public health data will allow, and it keeps moving in a positive direction, that we as school leaders have a responsibility to really, really push hard to do the best we can to try to get kids back to school, right? And so, and again, there's some variables there that we need to work through. Obviously, we need to kind of work with all of our stakeholders, our families, as well as our bargaining units, to make sure that we answer all questions and that there's an understanding and expectation, again, no matter what plan we move into, that it will serve students as well as we can under the circumstances. So one of the first things we've done is we've built teams at every school, and there's representation on those school-based teams. We have teachers, nurses, I think we have a few counselors on some of those teams, and we also have a district-level team as well. And so we've been convening weekly with the Wakefield Education Association Leaders Meeting to talk to them about reopening. A number of those leaders are on reopening teams at the high school and at the district level. And so we've been having weekly meetings that are scheduled for us to really work through each one of these plans and to talk about what might be the best fit for us or what might be the best way for us to start school here in the fall. And so I don't know if at this point, before, Mike, you already have a question.
I sure do. Yeah. Doug, one question I had, and I looked through the teams from the various schools, and it seemed to be a good cross-postulation of teachers, administration, et cetera. The one thing I noted as an exception in all the teams is that there were no parents. Now, I understand some teacher, the parents, and some administrative people are also parents, but was there a reason why you didn't include people who were, for lack of a better term, just parents on the committees?
So these are preliminary plans, Mike? And so, and in the preliminary planning stage, we thought, because there was a short turnaround time, that we thought that we could create three plans and then get those working drafts or the plan that we recommended, get that working draft out to the community and get feedback on that, which is what we sent out today, Mike.
Yep, okay.
Right? And so that's where we're at there. So we have over, I didn't do a head count, Mike, but I believe we have over 80 teacher leaders and administrators that are participating on these teams. And I want to say we have at least teachers that are also parents. We probably have at least 10 in the group. So, you know, and one of the things that we're also, I also learned early on as an administrator, is that there's really no secrets in what we're doing here. You know, our recommendations and the work that we're doing are really, because we are, the teams are so large, that a lot of people are in the know, but more people will be in the know this week with the information that we've released. And we've also scheduled follow-up Zoom meetings with different groups, elementary parents, middle school parents, and high school parents to follow up as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions from the group? No? Amy, you have a question?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So I can jump right in. The next piece of our presentation is to summarize the surveys that we had issued out early on in the process. One of the first things that we did was to send surveys to both parents and staff, and we included in our staff survey all components of the district, teachers and all faculty and staff who work within our buildings. So this page just really summarizes who responded at each of the schools and a breakdown of who is who, so we can keep going to the next slide.
So can you just comment on the parent participation or the participation that we had?
Sure, yeah. So just in terms of total respondents, it really, you know, we had a high rate of respondents across. We kept the survey open for about two weeks. And for faculty and staff within the district, we had 469 responses, and for parents and families, we had 2,744 responses across the district. The next slide just touches on some of the successes that were highlighted through the survey data, and the way we're looking at this is it's really helping us to improve our remote learning process, because I think a lot of the feedback came from the spring when we were in a remote model. So I think the successes were really what people put forward in terms of what worked. And, you know, I won't go through all the bullets, but I think the gist of it is that I think there was success in having some of our teachers have a comfort level with remote learning, having had the Learn Anywhere program in play. The communication piece was huge. I think parents and staff felt better when they were interacting live with students and being able to teach students over Zoom or Google Meet and give that kind of feedback and have that time directly with them. And we also talked, you know, when it was possible, and again, I think consistency is going to need to drive all of this. These were some of the successes that were in pockets throughout the district, but I think our goal moving forward is to have these be more consistent, but just around posting assignments with enough notice, helping families to organize their schedules and consistency across that. And also, I think there was appreciation for the fact that, you know, as a district, we tried really hard to be supportive of our families in the different places they might have been at during this crisis in the spring, and just really trying to keep an eye on the social, emotional needs of our families as well.
So in just hearing from faculty and parents, we got a lot of exceptional feedback, and there were kind of a lot of common themes. In terms of health and safety concerns from faculty and staff, we've heard a lot of concerns and questions about air quality and how that might affect the transmission of the virus, as well as kind of preventative maintenance schedules and how well our HVAC systems are We've heard quite a bit about kind of the need for us to be a little bit more clear on guidelines for faculty and staff around what happens if a faculty has a pre-existing condition and they are unable to come to school. And so we've heard those questions both from faculty and parents as well, because we do know that with the current pandemic, some parents and some students may have a pre-existing medical condition that may preclude them from participating in school if we're able to come back in person. We do know that we're going to need to and plan to provide PPEs for all staff, and students will be required from pre-K through 12 or pre-K through post to wear masks unless they are, have a medical excuse or they're unable to do so for a reason that we need to kind of discuss, right? And so, and the reason for that, I know the guidance says that students in K and 1 would not be required to wear masks. We just feel like, to be as safe as we can, that it's more than reasonable to just expect that we're just going to set the standard that all of our students and our faculty wear masks when they're in the buildings. And so we're thinking a lot about one-on-one service for our special education students and one-on-one therapies. We're thinking about traveling staff and students, and so those are things that have come up in regard to common themes and questions that have been on the side of both faculty and parents. Parents have shared a lot of concern, and Kara touched on this, about just continuity of service. Several of our parents have reached out to us, and they have provided feedback both within the survey format and outside of the survey format to say, you know, we have two children. We have a third grader and, you know, a second grader, and our third grade son is, their teacher has created a schedule that's predictable, routines that are easy to follow, and our second grader, the schedule is less structured. And moving forward, we know that if we're going to improve our remote model, either as a standalone or as a part of a hybrid model, we know that we need to significantly improve our remote learning model, right? We know we need to create more predictable schedules and routines for kids. We know that we need to create more opportunities for students to interact with more than one teacher, and we also know that we need to be able to have conversations, that we provide feedback to students that lead to us giving grades. And so I know that this is being discussed across the state in terms of how do you do that if you're in a remote model? Some districts are creating at the secondary level, they're creating assessment calendars where if you're in a class, you might have two assessments a quarter, it's on the schedule, and kind of students can look for it. And so one of the things that we need to be very clear about is that the remote part of our instruction, we need to be able to grade and kind of really improve the quality of that as we're moving forward, and student engagement is part of that as well. A big part of this, and people have asked a lot about synchronous and asynchronous learning, and so synchronous learning is a pre-existing schedule where you can go online and you can learn with a group of students all at the same time. Asynchronous would mean that you can, if something is recorded or you can stream it when you are available, and you can kind of use that, that's convenient to your schedule. For some students, both models can work. For other students, one works better than the other. So we're investigating ways to support faculty to really, to get them the tools and the hardware as well as the software to really investigate both of those models. So there'll be more to follow on that. So there's going to be some training to start the school year. I'll talk a little bit about that. And so we're also thinking about varying approaches to if we're going to be serving students in a hybrid for part of the week, for in-person instruction or for remote instruction. We need to think about the sizes of the groups that we're working with.
I think you had touched on this.
Yeah. And so when we think about kind of the spring remote that we just had, right? We had 61 days of remote learning, and, you know, we provided what we thought we could, right? And so we didn't grade, things were pass fail, and so, and again, there needed to be more continuity, and we can see that in the pie charts that are presented. And so, and I talked a little bit about areas of improvement on the right side that we're thinking about for the fall. So we have built in breaks for the committee to ask questions, so I don't know if you have questions at this point.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right. So Doug, one question I had, you did speak about whether it's asynchronous where you might record something and someone could go back and look at it later, whether you would, you know, in the class at the time and you wanted to refer back to it later and things of that sort. Are there any intentions within the context of, okay, you've got a certain amount of kids in a classroom, there may be half of that class that is remote, or there may be just a few kids that are remote. Will there be any sort of live streaming so that that remote child, who would normally be in that classroom with those other kids, can also be seeing it through their computer at the same time, or will it only be a recording type process? Will they not have access to live streaming of the actual lecture as it's taking place?
Yeah. So live streaming, Mike, falls into the category of synchronous learning, right? And so if, for example, you know, Algebra I is being taught first period at the high school, students, you know, this is, you see, we see this now frequently at colleges, right? And so we have some faculty that have the expertise and experience to do this and have kind of the hardware and technology to do it. This is something that we have to kind of grow into and to kind of create or to create the expectation that we will all be in that space. I don't think that we're quite there yet in terms of our professional development and also the development of the technological infrastructure. So, but I think it's something that you're going to see more and more of, Mike.
Yeah, I think it's a great tool. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to jump in, just in terms, it sounds also like you're referencing the concept of families choosing full remote learning if the district proceeds with a hybrid. And so that's something, you know, that we did dig into a little in our reopening plan as something that will require some more planning and preparation for if we proceed with a hybrid model. It will be a situation where we're going to have to first get a sense of who is who, who are the families that are choosing full remote learning, even if we go forward with a hybrid. We have had some families also speak out about wanting to homeschool, which would give families a little bit more flex, you know, to create their own schedules for learning for their students. So that's something, I think, once we make a final decision about which direction we're going forward with as a district, we'll be looking to figure out who those families are and then cohort them accordingly and staff accordingly, so that they have access to as much live remote instruction as possible. The live streaming into classes that are already going on, I think that that could be challenging in a couple of different ways, but it's something we still need to explore further.
Yeah, I would agree. At least they should have access to the recordings, obviously ideally live streamed so they're getting it at the same time, but at least recordings. Otherwise, I just worry that even if we go with a hybrid model, the remote kids are going to think they're second-class citizens in some way as far as where we can reach that cap, it would be better.
And one of the things that we've been talking about on our calls with the Commissioner of Education too, is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, is researching right now learning management systems that districts can opt into at an affordable cost, which would have, you know, would be standards-based curriculum built into it. So that's something that they're looking to make available to districts as well. So just in terms of something to work off of for those families.
Thanks, Kara.
Mike, you also bring up a great point, which is it would be great if a student was able to do X, right? So it's interesting, in the communication that we get and in our survey data that we look at, and when we talk to parents and interact with them, you know, some say, you know, if my child had a synchronous model and a structured schedule, they could have thrived this past spring, it would have been great for them. And we have other parents that say, there's no way that my son or daughter could follow a schedule, and they need, you know, another accommodation where they need to do it on kind of their own time. And so this is, again, this, and I make note of this because no matter what plan we create, it's going to create a challenge for someone, right?
Yeah. And I sort of think if we start out hybrid, and God forbid we have to go back to fully remote, it would make it for a better experience right out of the gate if we had this setup. But I understand there are some limitations and short-term challenges.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to be able to talk more about this, Mike.
Great.
And so at this point in the slideshow, we're going to move into describing plans that we created and the feasibility work that we did in determining what Wakefield could do, and to talk a little bit about our kind of reasoning behind each plan. So we were asked by the Commissioner of Education to, literally, to empty classrooms and to try to set up classrooms with students socially distant, between three and six feet apart. The World Health Organization says three feet, our CDC says six feet, and so, you know, there's a kind of this back and forth. You know, I think what we are in agreement on is that the father, the better, right? And so, but we looked at three feet, we've looked, you know, we emptied classrooms, we measured three desks three feet apart, and then we kind of emptied those desks out of the classroom and got a tape measure and put desks in six feet apart, right? And so just to see what that would look like and feel like, and really giving some serious thought to if, can we get everyone back into the buildings, right? And so if that's a possibility for us, you know, what would it look like? What would it look like to transform our fieldhouse into classrooms? What would it look like to transform educational spaces into almost any place we can make them, right? And so I think what we, you know, we did this, and I have to say, our reopening teams and the administrative teams were amazing in this space. You know, we saw the high school administrators with kind of that wheel that you put on the ground, like the surveyors use that measure distance, and we saw others, you know, we saw Joe Mulaney with a tape measure around the high school. Some were more sophisticated and they used kind of the, a tool that was issued by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And so, but at the end of all of this, when we walked And so, but at the end of all of this, when we walked schools and looked at classrooms and we saw, for example, kindergarten classrooms and first-grade classrooms where, that were empty, you know, and students, you know, there were desks or tables where students were six feet apart. We realized very quickly that, you know, the idea or the goal of getting people in, the question was really at what cost? So what was clear is that it would have severely impacted the instructional model. In addition to, we just, where we ended up is that we just didn't think that we could do it safely. So, so one of our recommendations in looking at the creation of and feasibility of having everyone return for a full in-person model, we've determined as groups and as teams and as a district leadership group that that's not feasible to do safely. And so the other, the next kind of level for us was really trying to be attentive to the idea that students need, students need to get back to school, right? There are some students, we've heard from parents that have been in touch with us, that very caringly have asked us, you know, my son is in a special education program and they need to be in school to receive service. We've heard from other parents and we've heard from administrative teams of conversations that they too have had with parents and students that have really shared kind of this concept that there's such a loss socially as well as the academic components that, you know, we really thought that the next possibility for us was a hybrid model, right? And so I want to be clear to anyone watching tonight, as well as to the committee, what hybrid instructional model looks like or what that means. And so if full instruction is kind of life as we used to know it, right? Schedules were over here, we're teaching full-time schedules, in-person, the day's predictable. You know, the schedules are what we had March 12th when we left school. And then because of the pandemic and because we needed to quarantine, we went full remote. So if one end of the spectrum is full remote and the other end of the spectrum is full in-person, hybrid is something in the middle where students would come to school for some portion of the week. The reason that we would create a hybrid model and the benefit is you essentially cut class sizes in half to make smaller groups so that students can be socially distant and can be kept apart and as safe as we can possibly keep them, right? And so, and within the hybrid kind of plan, the hybrid instructional model, 90% of the districts in the state are proposing some type of hybrid instructional model. And really there are three types that are being presented across the state. One type is in splitting students in half and creating a cohort A and a cohort B, one cohort would go to school one week, another cohort might go another week, right? So it'd be week on, week off. Some districts are presenting, like us, are presenting students being in school to be taught in-person for a portion of the week. So they come for Monday, Tuesday, there'd be a break, and then they'll come for Thursday. A second group would come Thursday and Friday. And when the first group is not in school, they would learn remotely for those three days. And the same thing for the other group that might learn later in the week. And the third hybrid plan is the splitting of school days. And so, and what that is, is, you know, students coming for a morning session and students coming for an afternoon session. And we've created, in terms of our hybrid model, this concept to get as many students as we can in school safely and again, while keeping them at a safe distance. So we really feel strongly that the best way for us to go at the elementary level is to have students come in for a morning session and then to have another group of students to come in for an afternoon session. And so I don't know if it's a good time.
We could probably get into that with the schedules.
Yeah. And so when we talk about schedules, we'll hear from the principals who are joining us on this call. And so one of the exceptional points or positives of the elementary hybrid schedule is that it takes the pressure off of families to do remote instruction because kids would be with a teacher Monday through Thursday. And Friday would be off where teachers could plan, we could clean the buildings, and then we would have students back in on Monday. And so the plan is for there'd be a cohort A in the morning. There would be a break during the day and we would have cleaning teams go around and clean and sanitize. And then we would have another group in in the afternoon. So that's what we would be presenting at the elementary level. At the middle school and high school level, we would be creating a two-one-two plan, meaning students in for two days and then learning remote for three days. You know, while our models at each level have common themes, they're really differentiated based on student needs, staff structure and our ability to team and really make use of all of our faculty. You know, and one of the drivers here in terms of this idea of hybrid or getting back to an in-person, you know, we really, again, feel strongly if the economy is reopening that we really need to try, try to get back. And again, be prepared if the public health data requires us to make a turn in the other direction, we'll be able to do that. So we're also talking about a phased reopening. And so the Commissioner of Education has determined that the school year will not be 180 days this year, but will be 170 days. And the reason is, is to allow for professional development for the first 10 days of the school year for teachers. We're proposing a Phase Two, which is kind of a modified return for students. And again, these dates, we may expand these dates and really think about what different groups of students might need at different levels. But again, this is our preliminary draft. And so then a Phase Three would be to actually start a hybrid instruction model for all students.
Great. So I think if you want to just click ahead, I think you just touched on that one.
Go ahead.
So yeah, the phased reopening, Doug just hit on all of those points. Again, you know, not to reiterate, but it's really a concept of getting the students back. I'll just give everyone a minute to look at that slide. Sorry, getting the teachers and staff back first and having them re-acclimate to their buildings, reconnect with their colleagues, get up to speed on new safety protocols and procedures and set up their new learning spaces with the hybrid model and the safety guidelines. I think our classrooms are going to look very different for the school year. So just giving teachers a sense of how they can best set those classrooms up for best instruction while maintaining safety guidelines. And then, you know, the Phase Two right there, Doug hit on all these other phases just to slowly acclimate students back into the buildings. I think one of the things that we heard from a lot of our teachers was just that worry about starting the school year without having the proper time to build the relationships that really become the foundation of their work with students throughout the school year. I think the spring, you know, we had a lot of challenges in the spring, but I think one of the things that really helped us to get through is the time of year that it fell. And I think our teachers had a nice foundation built with their students in terms of relationship building. Because I think we all know, you know, kids don't really work that hard for teachers that they don't feel connected to or don't feel like they can work for. So I think that piece is really important. So how we build those relationships is going to look really different. And then Doug talked again about the start of the hybrid, which dates are subject to change. So I'm going to move in if we can just go ahead to the next-
Sure.
-slide. So as we go into the next couple of slides, this starts our more detailed overview of the schedules at each of the buildings. I'd like to first just start by saying that I'm really proud of our building principals and the reopening teams. I know, you know, Doug, I speak for both of us, they worked really hard under really challenging circumstances. I think we were all, we had a bit of a grieving period in the beginning of this process just really thinking about what we're losing going into the school year in terms of what we know to be best instructional practices, you know, best schedules, you know, what we all relied on for so many years. And we knew we had to let some things go. But building these schedules, I'm really proud of how our teachers, our staff, our administrators really thought about how to best maximize the in-person time with our students. And developmentally, that looks so different at every level. We talked a lot about what students need and who they are as learners and how dependent they are at the pre-K and elementary levels and relying on their teachers and their parents to support them. And that just absolutely had to look different than our upper-middle, our high school students as well. So I just, I want that to be thought out, that that was the mindset going into this process was safety first and then maximizing instruction for our students and what, setting up the best possible learning environments when we had them in front of us. So I'm going to start with the Doyle schedule. If we can just get that-
It's there.
Okay. So the Doyle, Doyle is our integrated preschool. And when planning the schedule for the Doyle, we had to think about this a little bit different. With our preschool model, it's not, there aren't the entitlements to service as there are in K-12. Our public preschool, the foundation, is to serve our students who are referred to us from early intervention and who have IEPs and require special education services to help transition them into our school system. It's really, it's, the remaining pieces of Doyle are all heavily focused on our PR model population, students who we tuition in to support and balance our classrooms and be PR models for our students with disabilities. So that really played into this in terms of the Doyle meeting the needs of our students with special needs, but also having really that service component to the community of parents who are paying tuition to gain a service for their students. And I think in speaking with teachers, administrators, our preschool parents, hearing, seeing the survey data, I think remote learning for preschool really kind of defeats the purpose in a lot of ways. I think, you know, our preschool students are our youngest learners. They learn hands-on, they learn with their teachers, they learn by examples. And remote really just wasn't cutting it. So what we needed to create was a schedule that met the needs of our youngest learners, brought in sustainable tuition to keep that program functioning and also gave parents something that they felt was worth it for their children to invest in and to leave the home for. So I think the Doyle reopening team did a great job coming up with a schedule. It's really, it's a mostly full-time schedule. And again, the class, the class numbers are ranging from nine to 12 and they're based on the families, the numbers are based, we're anticipating that we can fill them based on families who already indicated that they were all in for a full-day program and paying full-day tuition. And so we run Monday through Thursday, full days. It will be a grab and go or bring your own lunch. And then Friday is an early release at 11:15, which allows time for, you know, extra teacher prep and planning and cleaning. So I think, you know, I think we'll have high interest in this program. We've also been monitoring, you know, the private preschools within the community as well just to see what they're able to serve. So our goal was really to meet the needs of our students in special education and those that we anticipate being referred to us through early intervention throughout the school year, but also providing the service to our families for as many kids as we could. So I can pass that over. We have Matt Carter and Tiffany back here from the elementary level to speak to the elementary schedule.
All right, thanks, Kara. So for the elementary level, we started by thinking about what would make the most sense for kids. Doug spoke a little earlier about some of the different models that were looked at in different districts for hybrid. And one of the things that we know about our elementary students is that we wanted to minimize the gaps between times that students were in school in front of teachers. We wanted to, we didn't want them to have long stretches of time where they were doing remote learning at home. We heard from families, we heard from staff, that that was really challenging, especially for the younger students, but even up through fourth grade. Remote learning with just full days of it was very difficult. So the model that we put together is with the cohort A and cohort B that splits the school day. And with this model, it allows all students to have time in front of their teacher in school each day of the week, Monday through Thursday, with Friday morning being remote in the morning and then afternoon time for cleaning and prep and planning for the teachers. The other thing that helps with that schedule is that even though, you know, cohort A would go to school in the morning and then they would be doing remote learning in the afternoon, but this would be a very different kind of remote learning than they would be doing if they were doing a full day of remote learning. They would have had time with their teacher in the morning, they would have had instruction. They might have things that they're finishing at home. They might have tasks that they're doing such as, you know, computer-based tasks like iReady or ST Math or some of the different programs that students had already started using in the spring. It would help with that dependence factor that our elementary school students have. They wouldn't be having to watch a teacher teaching online and then initiate a task by themselves based on what they're seeing online. They would actually be able to hear from their teacher, go home, work on it, and then come back the next day to get feedback again from their teacher. And we think that's really important for the students at the elementary level.
Yeah, and I can't echo enough, like, for us, the priority really needs to be, how do we get students in front of our teachers as much as possible? I think we heard loud and clear from families and from our staff as well that, you know, in the spring, there were some challenges, especially in the lower elementary grades with the remote learning. And our guiding piece here, along with safety, was how do we put students in front of our staff and really start kind of laying the foundational groundwork for them to be successful as they progress through school? I will say that we are hearing very similar concerns from staff. I do want to thank my reentry team. I think they've been super helpful and kind of guiding my thought process and the work that I brought back to the team. But also even this afternoon, hearing some feedback from parents too. I will say that we don't think any hybrid model is perfect, but we are trying to, you know, kind of use the lens of how do we put students kind of first and how do we kind of prioritize their learning within any sort of hybrid model.
And if I can just jump in, Matt and Tiffany. I know one of the things that the elementary group, you know, just to add some context, the four elementary schools worked really closely. The principals worked really closely and had consistency across messaging with reopening groups. But I think one of the things that was picked up in our reopening doc was that difference. And I would, I would say that, you know, we didn't catch that slight, fixing that slight change in the reopening doc, but we started out trying to have cohorts of three hours each for kids. We felt like the three hours in the morning, like in 8:15 to 11:15, and then an afternoon cohort for three hours would be ideal instructionally. But the topic of adequate time for cleaning has come up a couple of times and just wanting to ensure that, you know, that we can follow through on that piece. And I know Bob Shurely is going to speak to time studies that he's doing with his custodial staff. But one of the last-minute changes in the schedule that was put out was reducing that, the cohort times to two and a half hours from three to add an extra hour and a half, to add an hour and a half for cleaning in the middle. So I think, you know, again, we put out times as a concept, but as we refine and we get feedback and we learn more, they're subject to change. I think a three-hour block, I think all of you do too, think that a three-hour block would be ideal, but putting safety first, we have to make sure that we have adequate time for cleaning. So I just wanted to hit on that point. Okay. All right, so now, thank you Tiffany and Matt. We can move over. We have Adam Collantoni here from Galvin who can speak to the grade five and six hybrid schedule as well as the grade seven and eight hybrid schedule.
Thank you, Kara. I just want to thank the Galvin reentry team for all their hard work on this task. And I certainly want to thank our family for your patience as we work on this process. You know, tonight we noticed a lot of information to digest in all these plans. And every model that we thought through, we knew would present challenges for our families and we're committed to continue to work on that. At the middle school level, our team looked at a wide range of models, including what an early release could look like. I'm working with the middle school principal group that meets weekly and we're comparing notes across districts to try to see how similar we can be. The schedule we're presenting tonight, five to eight, really focuses on the safest conditions possible as we are at the elementary and high school. And at the middle school level, we're really focused on how to keep students engaged throughout the week, whether they're at home or in school. That was a lot of feedback we received in the spring. Was that the asynchronous learning at the middle school level proved to be difficult for students to manage their own time, their own learning. So we're really looking forward to a schedule that can give students some clear, consistent structure. structures, both in school and at home. And so that's one of the reasons why we split the week up in thinking of a cohort model for the hybrid. What you read tonight is fifth and sixth grade in school on Monday, Tuesday, and then at home on Thursday, Friday, and vice versa for seventh and eighth grade. So we're really looking for as much face time as possible between students and teachers, whether that's in school or remotely. One of the advantages in this plan at this time that we feel is that by cohorting the way we are, our students, when they're remote, their teachers won't have a cohort in school to have to balance the needs of. They'll be able to meet with students while they're at home, you know, through remote learning, and then meet with that same group of students while they're in school. So we feel like it will provide a lot of continuity for our students throughout the week and really focus on synchronous learning, whether they're in the building or at home. So that's what really led to the way we split the week, rather than doing a five to eight cohort Monday, Tuesday, and a five to eight cohort on Thursday, Friday. We're looking at the week as grade levels a little bit differently. And there's obviously a lot of fine details in our plan that I'm happy to answer from our group here tonight, and certainly we're going to be meeting with our Galvin community later in the week. So I'm not sure how deep you want to get into details tonight with this group, what questions you might have, but that's really an overview of our schedule, is that we're focused on synchronous learning Monday through Friday, whether it's home or at school.
Okay. All right, and I think we're saving all questions until the end. Okay, thank you Adam. And then, you know, we can move over to Amy McLeod, is here from the high school, our high school principal, to speak about the high school schedule.
Thanks Kara. So thank you for having us here tonight to talk about this and about our schedules. I want to just also thank the folks in the high school who helped to work on this plan. We had administrators, teachers, counselors, directors, and, you know, what you're seeing in front of you is really an iteration of, and there have been many iterations of these plans, right? And we are, as all the other teams have done, working using survey data, state guidance and feedback, weekly meetings with principals from across the Middle Sex League and across the state, and really trying to take that changing guidance from the State Department of Education and work it into the plan continuously. So like the other schools, I think our plan focuses on meeting the needs developmentally of where high school students are. If you look at our schedule, it is a basic one, a two-one-two hybrid schedule where we have two cohorts, cohort A and B. We are planning to split the cohorts somewhat alphabetically, really using alphabet as the basis of it, so that we can group families, siblings together, but then also taking into consideration some of our special populations, so potentially keeping our students who come from Boston together in a cohort, or thinking about where some of our students who need services such as EL services or special education services, and how to fit them and balance them into cohorts A and B, so that our services can be spread out to meet the needs of students. In that two-one-two, if you're looking at the schedule, essentially, we are talking about two days of in-person, and over those two days of in-person instruction, students would go through six blocks of instruction. We thought this was really important to create longer blocks, and we did that kind of strategically, knowing that students would need some deeper learning, given that would be coming back from full remote learning in the spring. We really feel like teachers need some time to dig in during those blocks, and if we're going to be seeing students less time during the week, we want a deeper learning time when students and teachers are together. Our Wednesday would be a full day of synchronous remote learning, and one of the things that we heard from both parents and teachers and students was it was sometimes hard to meet on a schedule regularly, similar to what Adam said at the middle school. So Wednesday is set up that students from both cohorts A and B would meet together with their teachers, and so that would help students to create a sense of community with everybody who is in that, in both cohorts, and really get a sense of a real classroom's experience, even though it would be done remotely. And then the two days that a student is not in person, they would be doing, sorry, asynchronous learning. And so with the high school, that could be a number of different things. Doug mentioned some of them, prerecorded lessons or discussion boards or demos or even collaborative discussion forums. And I think that's, so many of our teachers at the high school level have really grown their skills in using technology to provide better asynchronous learning. Also, at the high school level, we feel that students are able to do two days of asynchronous learning on their own, where they'd have the three other days, two being in-person and then one being synchronous. The six-period schedule is a change from what we currently do, but we feel like we need to do that based on the rotation of the schedule. We also don't want to have ASCs in our schedule anymore, based on the fact that we want the time in school to be spent in academic learning blocks. And so we would be working on student schedules over the next few weeks. And so to get rid, to eliminate the ASCs, we would be offering health and wellness remotely. And so regardless of the hybrid plan, Brendan Kent and his team is working on creating health and wellness modules for the high school, so students would be working on those in a asynchronous model remotely. I think just to point out a few benefits of this hybrid schedule, I think when we talk about meeting the needs of students and teachers in an in-person model, I think the hybrid kind of hits the sweet spot. We're able to, again, get more face time with students so that students can make connections, have those baseline lessons as a small cohort, then have the synchronous Wednesdays together. You'll notice the early dismissal in our schedule, and I think that that had to be done for a number of reasons. We weren't able to figure out how to provide lunches safely in a building of our size and structure at the high school. But the afternoon 90-minute block is a learning time, and so we're thinking about ways that the students who are not in-person on those two days could, can get supports remotely in the afternoon. There may be students who stay through who are in-person to get academic supports, to get guidance supports, essentially maybe to get some of the services that we need to provide that can't fit into the six-block day. You know, and then the idea of having older students who are able to be home a little bit earlier than the younger children, I know that can help with families. I know in my family, that's an important thing for my older to help with the younger. And so we think in this current context, having students there and available, it also helps with the bus schedule for the district in terms of meshing our schedule with the other two levels or three levels in the district. Finally, I think the one thing that we heard that was loud and clear to us, not only Adam talked about the discussion about synchronous and asynchronous learning and what we heard about that, we also heard the high school students needing enough time to be able to do the work assigned. When you get to the high school level, we're talking about a gradual release. Students need time to work on their, on their assignments and activities independently. And I think it's important that we build that into our schedule, so that students aren't feeling like they go home at two o'clock and then now they're on their screens from two o'clock till, till eight o'clock or whatever, trying to catch up with the work because it's a hybrid model. The idea of having those two asynchronous days at home allows them to work on extended assignments, do a little bit more of independent work, but then still have the opportunity, as the other principals have said, to check in with their teachers and have that ability to connect. So that's sort of the highlight of the high school and where we are with our plan thus far.
Great. Thank you so much Amy. So I think at this point, we can open it up to questions?
Questions.
So if we, do you want me to structure it for the group and we can go through? Going back to Doyle, any questions related to the Doyle? We can maybe go through by level? Sure, Mike? Mike, was it, did you have a question, Mike?
Nothing on Doyle.
Okay, so no one has any questions on Doyle?
Can I just clarify, the Doyle, the class sizes are going to be between nine and 12?
So we, the reopening team had done measurements around all the spaces in Doyle, and based on, the number of kids in a class is really based on the size of that classroom. So they ranged from, we have nine classrooms, and they ranged from nine to 12, most being 11 was the average class size.
Okay. That's all I had for Doyle.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the, oh, Chris?
I was just wondering, you know, the Doyle schedule is so different than the elementary schedule, could you explain to me why they're not the same?
Sure, I can explain that.
Beautiful service.
Yeah, so, so the Doyle, you know, again, just going back to why we have, you know, the main purpose of our integrated preschool and why we offer that, you know, we're, you know, as a school district, we have to offer K through 12. Our pre-K is to meet the needs of our students with disabilities in the district who are referred to us from early intervention. And then the integrated preschool model is built around that as its core. And the fact that Doyle, students who attend Doyle who aren't on IEPs pay tuition, really drives that model. So unless we bring in a sustainable amount of tuition, then our staffing numbers, everything is really, you know, works off of that. So we worked hard to try to create a model that not only met our special education needs within the building, but also brought in enough tuition to maintain our current levels of staffing and appropriate class size.
You're also required at that, in that program to have a certain balance of typical and special needs kids, are you not?
Right.
And you have the room to maintain that ratio, never mind about tuition, you know, the ratio has to be maintained and you have the space to do that.
Yeah, so we did, we had, I think our number is around 125 total students that we'll be able to take in. We had 33 students who are currently on IEPs for, you know, certain goals. Not all of those IEPs require a full-day program, but I think a lot of our students on IEPs, the parents, if they weren't offered it through the IEP, wanted to pay the difference and participate in a full day, just for the exposure. So we did have, you know, with the model that we're able to put forth, we were able to accommodate most of the, most if not all of the families who had, in our survey information before the closure, indicated that they wanted a full-day program. So the ratios are still balanced, we're, you know, we should be working off like a 40/60 split in a preschool classroom in terms, in terms of students with disabilities to peer models, and we're definitely able to maintain that with, with even more peer models than, than the averages that we should have in the classrooms. Does that help? Is that good? Okay.
I think Colleen had a question.
Mike, Mike as well.
Colleen, go ahead. Go ahead, Colleen.
On the elementary level, I'm sorry, I was.
Okay. So Mike, did you have a question for Doyle?
Oh, no, no, not Doyle, no, I'm sorry. I thought we were going.
I think we're good with Doyle then.
We're good with Doyle.
So moving on to elementary, yeah, Colleen, you had a question?
Yeah, so for Matt or Tiffany? So in, in the model, the AM PM model, just to clarify for our, our parents, because each teacher is engaged with the alternate cohort of students during, between the classroom, the remote learning will look more like student-directed learning, so does that mean it looks more like homework enrichment and extension of what they learned in person? I'm thinking particularly when you're in the AM cohort and you haven't been in school, maybe you're taking your PM work that you did the day before and applying that to the morning, and you have that time and space, but you don't necessarily have access to your teacher because that teacher is teaching the other cohort. So it's sort of a homework time, enrichment time, reading time, is that how you're looking at it?
That's pretty accurate, and, you know, we have had that conversation about, you know, is there a way that, how can we support, find ways to support those children who are at home during the morning or during the afternoon? Are there other ways we can set up some office hours or can we have some other activities? Because the classroom teacher is going to be teaching the other half of the students, but we know full well that students that are at home working, you know, regardless of how well they're set up or how much, how familiar they are with the activities, there are going to be those times where they have questions or need some support. So that's a part of the plan we're still looking at.
Okay, great.
And we also have the staff that we feel can really support students, you know, whether they're at home or in the classroom as well. So we are kind of looking at this as being an opportunity to, for students to do their homework or to do a little more on the enrichment side, and we can use staff, I think strategically, to make that happen at home as well.
Staff meaning more than just their classroom teachers, their aides, you know?
Correct. So at Woodville in particular, like, we have, you know, a large, you know, a large number of ISPs, which are instructional support personnel, and, and we can kind of use those staff members to support students if they were in need of that at home.
Thinking about also reading specialists, interventionists, I mean, other staff members who would normally be pushing into multiple classrooms.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Mike, did you have a question in regards to elementary?
Actually, I have a few questions for Tiffany and Matt. I guarantee you, as you're going to your parent roadshow this week, the schedule is going to dominate, 75 or 80% of the questions you're going to get, so it's important we, we have a decent discussion on this. So my questions are several. One is, you have Friday as a, as an exclusively remote day. Both the high school and the middle school have Wednesday as an exclusively remote day. Why do we try to sync it up so they all have the same totally remote day? I'm thinking of the parents, they understand we're going to build the best educational structure for our kids, and that's what we're here to do, but the fact that the parents' availability and their work commitments and, you know, a half-day doesn't really help them. A full day allows them to perhaps work a full day, half-day, you know, you might as well just have no day from their perspective or their ability to work. So I just want to make sure we understand and we're comfortable with the fact that, you know, you may have multiple parents, kids may, parents may have multiple kids, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one in Doyle Bear. Wouldn't it be nice if they all had the same day where they were at home?
Yeah.
So is there any magic behind Friday, or could it be Wednesday to sync up with the other two?
So when we, when we developed this schedule, we originally developed it with Friday as, as the day, thinking that that's four days in a row that the kids are in school, making connections with their teacher, being in there. We have had the conversation of, could we switch it to Wednesday? Yes, that's something we can absolutely do. We're still kind of working out the details of that, but we don't see that as it has to be on Friday. You know, we want to think about our families, we want to think about what's going to be best for everybody, so that's something we could definitely look at doing.
I think, I think what drove most of that conversation, Mike, was just around, so much of our work at elementary is around routine and procedure, that if we could do four days in a row, that would help on the kind of teaching and learning side, but absolutely, like Tiffany said, we're open to that feedback, and we expect it.
I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's routines are out the window at this stage anyway, so we're all starting anew, so probably won't be as big an adjustment there. And then the second question is, so you have a class that the first half of that cohort, cohort A goes in the morning, cohort B goes in the afternoon. The advantage, can you go through a little bit the advantages of each of them having a half-day versus, let's say you have cohort A that goes the entire day Monday, cohort B goes the entire day Tuesday, cohort A goes the entire day Thursday, and cohort B goes the entire day on Friday? Once again, this is more of a parent and trying to plan their schedules as well. If it doesn't make sense, I get it, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I mean, I think, I think that goes back to the idea of trying to, trying to change what the remote learning aspect of it looks like and avoiding having a full day where students are expected to do remote learning versus time in school and then having some work that they're doing more independently.
Okay, okay.
And Matt, you can add to that if there's more.
I think that's, that sums it up pretty well.
Okay, so those are my questions. Oh, actually, sorry. The infamous cleaning the bath, the classrooms in between the, the morning session and the afternoon session, how is that going to hap, I mean, who's going to do it and how is it going to be done in an hour and a half? If it's teachers, they have to eat, you know, probably have a few things to do. How do you envision that happening?
So we've, we've actually been engaged in conversation with Bob Shoroli, our facilities director, around that work, and part of the reason why we've expanded that middle section is based on the feedback we receive from him, so this might be a question that he could help us with.
Whenever you're ready, Bob.
Just trying to unmute myself. As you posed the question, right, how do we do it in, in that time with limited resources and the, and the amount of desks and chairs we have in each classroom? You know, this is really something that, you know, we're all in this together, and I think, you know, our cleaning plans, you know, rely on everyone to do their part. The, the plan is for each school, the elementary level is I'm going to bring a second custodian and then have to assist the day custodian to help with the cleaning, but again, that's it, high-touch surfaces, bathrooms, and that's throughout the school, but, you know, the desks and the chairs in the classrooms, that's, and that's based on relying with everyone to, to help out during this time.
Yeah, I assume it's just the kindergarten teach classrooms that have bathrooms in them, is that correct, Bob?
Right. Yep, yep, so the custodians, custodians in this plan would, would go in and hit those in the high-touch surface. So the custodians in this plan would go in and hit those in the high-touch surface areas. About those, pause. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions? Suzie.
As a follow-up to that question, Bob, would custodians from typically assigned to other schools help out at the elementary schools in order to make that happen? Is it all hands on deck wherever needed?
Pretty much. So first, first, you know, with the union, the overtime would be offered to the signature custodians. But if they're unavailable or if we need help, then yes, other schools would definitely be pulled in to assist.
Okay. And then my other question was around the remote day, whether it be Friday or if we moved it to Wednesday. Doug, at the beginning of the meeting, you said something about that day being off. And then in here, it says kind of remote. And I've gotten some feedback from elementary parents saying, what is that day? What is that day going to look like? I believe Tiffany, you said that it would be remote learning in the morning and then the afternoon would be for teacher planning. But I'm thinking for students specifically, because parents are thinking, what's happening on that remote day? What does that look like? Is that potentially specialists? I know in your schedule, you've got either two or three specialist blocks that are noted, you know, could it be specialist? Could it be teacher-run, you know, the assigned teacher running remote activities? So if you could just talk a little bit more about that, because I think that there's some potentially confusion around what that looks like?
And I think, I think all of those things you were just saying could be part of what that Friday looks like. You know, specialist enrichment activities, some synchronous learning, remote learning with the classroom teacher, you know, morning meeting kinds of things. There are a lot of different options for that. And, you know, I know Cara has, you know, said, and Doug has said, you know, the plans are still evolving. We're still working on it. So if we have some other ways that we can make that a more valuable learning experience for our students, that's really the goal. I mean, our goal is to create these important learning experiences for students. So if we can find another way and have some other ideas that people are suggesting to do that, we want to do that.
Thank you.
One other question, and it had to do with Wednesdays. So let's assume it's Wednesday for argument's sake. Will the teachers be allowed to conduct their remote classes at their respective schools? Versus having to do them at home?
So I, you know, we've gone back and forth on what that remote teaching aspect would look like and where it would take place. I'm a fan of having kind of, you know, teachers in classrooms and using resources, having access to colleagues, having access to our technology. But, you know, it really kind of, within a hybrid model, I think more discussion could happen.
And my second question is really, so you can tell I'm touting Wednesday, is you could always use Wednesday as a deep clean day too. So two days on, a deep clean. Two days on, another deep clean on Saturday or Sunday. So there are some other potential benefits as well to Wednesday. Okay, I'll stop talking about Wednesday.
No, we duly noted on Wednesday.
So can I also address the questions about cleaning that Mike brought up? There's a lot of anxiety about us having sufficient staff and being able to clean schools in between groups of students coming into the building. And I will share with you what we have shared with the WA leaders. If we can't effectively clean, we won't do that model, right? And so, you know, but, but we do believe that we can. And Bob Shiroli, it's good having an MBA as a facilities director. Like, he's made this a little bit of a science experiment, and he's committed to figuring this out. We're also hiring some new custodians to come in and support this as well, right? And so initially, what we had started with in elementary is we were looking at the 2-1-2 model, which would be, which was similar to our middle school and high school. But again, and just hearing from our reopening teams and really hearing from our principals, you know, I think, I certainly felt like the model that they are presenting really gave students the best opportunity to see their teachers every day, right? As opposed to there being gaps in time. You know, in a 2-1-2 model or a two-days and two full days with three days remote, you know, that gives, that gives students, you know, three days of remote learning. Some of our students, you know, in K1, well, we just felt like that was, the kids needed more. Correct me if I'm off, Matt or Tiffany, that I just want to reflect our conversations accurately.
Yep, they're accurate.
So, but, but again, I just want to be clear in my communication. You know, if we can't execute a part of the plan, we're not going to do that plan. But, but that doesn't mean that we're still not, that doesn't mean that we're not committed to the hybrid concept. I want to be crystal clear about that, right? Because we really feel strongly that we need to get kids into school in person to do our best work. So.
Amy, I had one more question.
Sure.
I think, Tiffany, that you said that you are going to, that you're probably going to split cohorts across using the alphabet so that families with more than one child in elementary school would definitely be on the same plan. Did I hear that correctly?
So I think high school was talking about alphabetical. I mean, obviously, we would want to build our cohort so that students that are in the same family would be in the same cohort. Just another, another twist to that is just we need to look at our classrooms and make sure that we're building our balanced classrooms. And, you know, doing A through L isn't going to create, you know, at Greenwood, one classroom that has many more students than the other classroom. So we would just kind of have to see what the effect of that is.
I think, I think what we would do, Suzie, is we would take that on a case-by-case.
Case-by-case basis?
Yep.
Okay.
And look at, instead of saying generally alpha, because I think we would end up exactly in the space that Tiffany described, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be alpha.
High school is different than elementary.
Yeah.
Right?
But keeping families together.
Can families assume that you're going to try to keep them together? Because at the Galvin, we know the model does not allow for that. But at least at elementary and, and high school, I think it seems, is seemingly less problematic. Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think just to, you know, answer part of Suzie's question, like, we're going to do everything we can to work with families to make this work for them, right? If there's a specific request, you know, we're going to do everything we can to meet requests because we understand kind of the situation and kind of how people's lives have been changed by all of this. And if there's a request that we can meet, we're 100% going to try to meet that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually just had one question in regards to teacher prep time. You know, so that break, that hour and a half in between the day, how much time do the teachers get for lunch? And then do they get any prep time as well in there?
So our schedule does build in some specialist time during the long blocks that are in the morning. So that would be a time that teachers would have available some prep time as well as that extended block in the middle of the day has room for their lunchtime and some prep time as well.
Okay. And then also, I think you may have already answered this question in regards to the afternoon, when the children go to school in the morning and they're home remotely in the afternoon. Are paras going to be available to possibly kind of assist kids to keep them engaged? Is that what was already answered?
Absolutely. So we're going to do everything we can to support our students with the adults we have in our building. So it's about figuring out what students are in which cohort and what those needs are. And then based on that, then we will kind of assign our adults and our staff, you know, appropriately to make students as successful as possible.
And then I also just have one question that may be across the board in terms of attendance. You know, what is the accountability in terms of the kids actually, like especially at the high school, when they're in school in the mornings and then when they leave for the afternoon? Do they have to sign in and will attendance be taken in the afternoons? And then also, how will attendance be taken during the day in the mornings as well?
So one of the things that we're hearing from the Commissioner of Education and from the Department of Education is that student time and student learning time needs to be accounted for, right? And so one of the things that at the secondary level, you know, in terms of students learning remotely, how do we account for that time? I think one of the, kind of the biggest indicators is the completion of work, right? Completion of assignments and also participation with classmates during remote activities, right? And so one of the things that I had mentioned earlier is, you know, some secondary, some high schools and some middle school, upper middle, are creating these assessment calendars where students in classes know that there are grades. So, you know, as we see students in person and as we look at their participation in remote instruction and the completion of student work, and we also look at kind of their performance on assessments, and it's going to be different at different levels, right? And so that's not going to, at elementary, it would be a kind of developmental milestones or standards-based reference. At the middle and high school, it would be more traditional grading. But that, that is going to be, has to be, not going to be, has to be part of our model, no matter what model we propose, right? And so whether it's hybrid or remote, that, that has to be a standard part of what we're doing.
Okay. I just had one more question for Adam. Like, at the Galvin, when, like, if you bring in a fifth grade class, how are you going to socially distance all those students in a classroom? You know, will you split up, like, because I know there's two teachers to one class? Will half of the class go with one teacher and the other half go with the other? And then you have enough space within the school to do that safely?
Dude, that's a great question, Amy. So what we're doing at the middle school level, for those familiar with the team concept, we're just creating bigger teams of adults to spread out students more. So on a typical team with your core academic teachers, we're going to partner them up with specialist teachers. And they're going to rotate through those classes with the specialists and academic teachers. And that's how we're going to bring down the class sizes per team. And so our class sizes right now, at a max, with the max social distancing, is 15 students per cohort. And so it'll still be the team model, but our specialist teachers will join the teams, and that will help us reduce the class sizes.
Great, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. Mike, you had a question?
Can I just add? Oh, Adam, oh, sorry, Mike, I just think it might help to add to Amy's question. Adam, can you speak about, so with that, are you looking at your spacing differently? I know we've talked about the spacing within, like, spreading out among, you know, maybe different classrooms?
Yeah, one of the advantages of not having two grades in the building is that we can spread out across. We have a wonderful facility with a lot of space. So by not having two grades in the building, we're mapping out full use of our classrooms on those two days that students are in school. So we feel really good about the physical space piece right now in our schedule.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Yep, Mike?
I have a question for Adam and for Amy, but Amy gets more time to answer it because I'll ask you first, Adam. So you both have done the same model where you have two days in a row, then either have a remote or, yeah. So the current model you both have has a situation where they meet two days in a row, and then they have five days between the next time that they have an in-class experience. Five days. And if you changed it to, let's say Monday was one cohort, Tuesday was the other, Wednesday's remote, Thursday's Cohort A again, B, the biggest gap you'll have is three days between an in-class experience for the kids. So my question is, is it more important to have those kids go two days in a row? Or is it more important for them to have a short, the shortest possible time between classic, in-class experiences?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point that you raised, Mike. I think in looking at that wide range of factors in building the week for us, you know, we looked at everything from the different cohorts coming in and out of the building over the course of the week. And so if we kept the same cohort of kids in Monday and Tuesday, I think the reason why the middle school, maybe the high school, looked at Wednesday was allow for a deep clean for another 500 students come into the building on Thursday and Friday. So that was one piece. And in the middle school model, we're really looking at the synchronous learning is not really a break of learning. It will be not in person, obviously, at the physical building, but it's really a straight learning experience right through. The only difference is either at the desk in person or on their device at home with their teacher. And that's the synchronous piece that we're really prioritizing in the model.
Amy, thoughts?
Yeah, somewhat, somewhat similarly, though, the high school schedule looks different. So if you're looking at the high school schedule, students only see their teacher, because we are not teamed at the high school and students see six distinct teachers, they only see their teacher once over two days. And so it's going to be a different experience for them for the two days. And we wanted to sort of replicate that idea of going through your cycle of classes A through F to make it similar to in-person learning. And I also think developmentally, I look at Wednesday as an in-person day. I know that it's going to be remote, but it's going to be synchronous learning. Kids are going to be on there all day. There's a schedule that parents and teachers have asked for. To answer Amy's earlier question, attendance is going to be mandatory those days, right? Those are not optional Zoom check-ins, so that is synchronous learning. So I feel like the distance will be less. And yeah, it's a point well taken, right? But for me, I think it's a trade-off. I think the time between class experience allows the kids to take their learning that they've chunked in that, in that sort of experience and then work independently on the assignments or the activities that are extending that learning till they have time to come back. So I think it's a trade-off though, right? I mean, I hear your question.
Thank you both.
Suzie?
Adam, if I can go back to Galvin. I'm trying not to be dense, but I'm having a really difficult time understanding how this is going to work at the Galvin. So you just, and Amy, you kind of started to ask the question. So you're going to team specialists with the core teachers? And there's a five-period, there's five periods available. So are we saying that middle school students are going to get all of their specialists? So they're going to get their four core classes and foreign language and tech ed and health and art and music? And that's how it ends up kind of being possible to do it the way that we're doing it? So in those two days over those five periods? I guess maybe if you could help me with what those five periods look like? And I don't have the schedule in front of me anymore because my computer died. But if you could, I'm just having a difficult time. And I know there's a reason why you're doing fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth. And so I'm really trying to understand that because I know that that is creating a lot of angst for a lot of parents who have kids, multiple kids at the Galvin that fall into different cohorts. So I feel like we need to spend a little bit of time on this so that people can understand how this is going to work.
Sure. I'll try to deconstruct a lot of what you asked right there. Again, kind of the overarching goal for the Galvin, the way we are splitting the week by grade level was really to provide live teaching, whether it's in person or from home. And that was what led to the grade level distribution, fifth and sixth, seventh and eighth. That's certainly open for revisiting, whether it's fifth and seventh, fifth and eighth. We can certainly go back and look at that. To ask about kind of the breakdown of the day, so on a typical team at the Galvin, particularly in the upper grades, there's four cohorts, four cohorts on a team right now, going back to March. We're adding two more adults on the team to make it six cohorts. And that's bringing down our numbers, class size numbers. The staff that we're adding are specialists. So for example, an eighth grade team, we're going to add an art teacher and a health teacher for conversation. And in the schedule that you're looking at, those, those groups of students is six groups of students on a team. It's a five-period day. So similar to a high school model, we're going to do a waterfall schedule. So students won't necessarily see all six teachers in one day. It'll rotate over two days. And that's another reason, Mike, why we're keeping students together for two days in a row. Is we're creating 60-minute classes. We want to really maximize time on learning with students, with adults. So our typical classes at the Galvin are 45 minutes. We're doing 60-minute classes, five periods. So the students that will have six, six different classes in their schedule, but any given day they'll only have five periods. And we're working on schedules that have a rhyme or reason for how they participate in those classes. And there's a lot of variables behind the scenes that we're working out right now. For the specialists, they'll have a certain length of time that they work with students on a particular team before they rotate to the next team. So students will have an opportunity to participate in a full range of specials that we offer. It's just going to look a little different this year based on state guidelines of what students can do in terms of some of the specials that we offer. So we still wanted specialists to be a lively part of their school day and have full access to specialists. That's why we are attaching them to teams of teachers, and we're going to rotate them through. So I don't know if Suzie, that helps clarify things a little bit?
That does. That helps a lot. One additional question? That does, that helps a lot. Um, one additional question. So I think, um, there was an assumption that if you're on, you get assigned to your team and your, your fifteen kids, I had heard, you know, teachers are going to move into the classrooms, kids aren't going to be moving. Is that really true in the, in this case, if you've got s- you've got six teachers on a team? Is it that those fifteen kids will stay together? Or is there some variation to that because some kids are gonna do music and some people do French, not Spanish? And, right, so I, I'm assuming that there's some level of variation that will happen, but that the core classes, those kids are staying together? And I'm, I'm asking this question just more from a, a limit of, um, exposure, you know, to how many kids are kids gonna be exposed to?
Yeah, great question. You know, when we looked at the state guidelines that were released from DESI about a month ago, the guidelines really emphasized limiting student movement throughout the building as much as possible, limiting intermingling with other cohorts of students as much as possible. So to start the year, we are looking, um, to have students in groups of fifteen, um, particularly very much in the beginning of the year until everyone learns new routines and safe routines, keeping students somewhat stationary while building in movement breaks, while building in structured opportunities to move around the building. Um, but to, to your question, uh, a lot of that is our starting point, to keep students with the same cohort uh, and to have teachers meet them in their space rather than releasing six hundred students into the building when the period ends. Um, we didn't feel like that's a safe way to start the school year, given the size of Galvin Middle School. Um, we wanted to really, um, recreate a sense of community with students in the building, uh, retrain students on what safe behavior looks like at the middle school. And then once we feel like we have a good handle on that, you know, we're very much looking forward to uh, gradually, uh, opening things up a little bit, um, in our model.
Perfect, thank you.
I have one more question, Adam, on a very important subject, lunch. So you're the only institution that will actually be having lunch in this new model. So it looks like you're gonna break it into four different lunch sessions, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, and they're gonna eat, they're bringing their own lunch and eating in the cafeteria? How, you may have said it before, I apologize if I missed it, but how will that play out?
Yeah, no problem. So in, in a typical school year, we run four lunches, one per grade level. So in this model, we're still gonna run four lunches, but we're gonna run two per grade level. Uh, and so that will cut the grade level in half. And we've been working with Bob Chiroli on what, uh, capacity looks like in the cafeteria and the gym for students to have lunch. Certainly wanna leverage outdoor weather in the fall to get students outside. Um, and again, tho- those would be really controlled movements in the building until, you know, we feel like things are very safe. Uh, we'll be working with food service on what purchasing lunch could look like, what are the options? Um, and, and so that, that's our game plan now. That was our, probably our biggest hurdle was scheduling a lunch. Uh, but we felt that if we could schedule it, then, then we should do it. Um, and so we're gonna have two lunches per grade level during the day to break down the numbers.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
And Mike, just to jump in there, uh, cleaning in between lunches, um, you know, uh, have to give a big shout out to Tom Banker. He made the suggestion to use disposable tablecloths in between each lunch so that you don't worry as much about, um, disinfecting tabletops if you have, if you have disposable tablecloths protecting them in between students.
How much time do you have between each lunch session?
Yeah, so I think we've scheduled fifteen minutes before lu- uh, between lunches. In, in our world, that's an eternity. Um, usually, we lay there thirty seconds in between lunches. So, uh, you know, we're pretty confident with the fifteen-minute, uh, gap that we can do a really good job cleaning.
Great, thanks again.
And, and just kind of go back to some of the questions that Suzie had and other members. One of the advantages of having a weekly middle school principal group is that we shared our models with each other. And e- every level, elementary, middle and high school has different variables and unique needs of our students. And, you know, this isn't far off from some of the middle school models that we've been working with in our middle school group uh, in terms of how students being co-horted and how their, uh, what their day looks like in terms of, um, structure. So, you know, I just wanna put that out there.
Thank you, Adam. Um, I have, um, a few questions for Amy, um, in regards to the high school model. Um, uh, the first one is, I, I see on the schedule that the homeroom is twenty minutes. I'm just wondering, um, why it is so long and what may, what will they be doing in that, uh, homeroom session? Um, the second question is, um, when the kids are remote, um, you know, do they have to follow the same time structure? So will they be logged in remotely for the eighty minutes? Um, and then the third question would be, maybe once the schedules are done and, um, things are sort of kind of ironing out, would they ever be able to possibly have those remote days work, um, synchronous?
Okay, I think I missed your third question, but I got your first two, so I'll, I'll have you run, uh, through them again.
Yep.
Um, I'm actually, um, so, so for the first question, um, if you, if, the way the schedule is done, students are actually gonna stay in the same room as their first law class, um, um, for advisory, homeroom advisory. Um, the reason why we extended the time is a couple of things. Um, we thought that, um, given where we're coming back from, um, and given what we know about, um, social emotional learning, um, in general, and the fact that we have been, um, needing to go to have an advisory model at the high school, um, we thought that was never a better time than now to have a chunk of time built in at the beginning of the day um, to give teachers, um, a few minutes to pause, um, to connect with kids, um, to see how they're feeling to start the day. Um, you know, if you look at the schedules across the district, um, um, elementary schools have meeting times, um, middle schools have built-in advisory models, and high schools generally say, hey, just start learning, you guys are fine, right? And we know that that's not good practice. Um, so we really feel like that advisory time gives students the time to have a gentle start to their morning, um, to make sure that we're checking in, see how the learning is going. Um, and it's also a way to go back to Mike's question, so when they come back in and haven't been in school for a number of days, um, I think it'd be important to kind of get a sense of how have those days been when you've been out, what's working, what's not? Um, and how can we kind of flex our, um, flex our learning? I, I'm gonna just pause for one second and close my curtain. My neighbor's tr- my neighbor's tree just fell on their house. We're having like a major storm here.
Oh my gosh.
Everybody's fine, everybody's fine, just give me a minute.
A siren's out there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody's fine though.
A little distracting.
Yeah, I'm like paying no attention to the blinking lights behind me, sorry. Um, so Suzie, that's why I didn't hear, I'm, I'm sorry, Amy, that's why I didn't hear your third question, cause I was seeing the lights flash. So, can you repeat the second and third question?
Yes, um, no, so the second question was, um, when the kids are remotely learning, um, on those days that they're not in school, um, are they required to like log in and actually have a remote session for eighty minutes? Or are those remote sessions shortened?
No, so, okay, so the way that the schedule looks like, it looks like they're logging in for those eighty minutes, right? Cause it's the way the schedule is designed, um, for looks, right? But on those two off days, those days, um, go back to what I said earlier about the asynchronous learning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't envision that most teachers would ha- have kids logging in on those days at that time because they'll be teaching the other half of their class, so they wouldn't be able to. Um, but what would be happening during that time is students, um, to go to what Doug was saying earlier when you asked that attendance question, is students, um, attendance can be tracked on those days by the work that they're gonna put in. Um, and I'll give an example of, say, um, an online blog where a teacher's gonna post a question, um, have students do a reading, um, and require them to engage in at least putting two or three responses onto that shared document or that shared blog, if you will, um, on, on that period. So that would demonstrate to a teacher that they've done a significant amount of work to check in on that day. Um, the Wednesdays are different. The Wednesdays would be the forty-minute, um, the, the period check-ins throughout the day timed. Um, so that could be counted easily. But the asynchronous would be less, um, chummed out like that. However, if there was a stu- so this is what I like about this schedule. If there, if you were a student who really needs a structured schedule in front of you, you could say to yourself, and I have a student like this at home, um, who needs to know when they need to do their work on the asynchronous learning, they could follow that schedule from home and do their, their work during those time chunks. So it really could work in, in either way, and we would support students to kind of do that in a way that works for them.
Yeah, okay, and, and my, yeah, it does. And my third question was just, um, you know, once the kids are actually, um, you know, feeling more comfortable with the scheduling, is there any way that they could, um, log in and, and sync in with the class virtually if they needed to? I mean, i- is there a way for them to be able to do that, possibly?
So I'm gonna defer back to Doug's answer. I think that, um, as we, uh, improve our technologies and we improve, um, teachers' ability to be able to flex with, um, the kinds of learning that we know that kids can do, um, I think there will be some models at the high school where some teachers will be able to do that. Um, I'm not sure we're all teachers do that yet. Um, am I frozen again?
Yeah, you're okay. Yep, you're back.
I have a lot of stuff going on here. This is so embarrassing.
Quite enabling your living.
It's fine.
She's saying as we improve technology.
It's usually, it's usually very quiet here, so. Um, so, we're just, we're just, uh, A- so Amy, I was saying basically we're hoping that, um, potentially we could get to that model, um, for some teachers in some classes. But again, I would say that, um, you know, that, that's growth that, that we, that we need to do.
Okay.
And so we're hoping that that will be a potential, and maybe some teachers will be willing to pilot that, uh, to start, and we could see how that works.
Yeah, that'd be great if, if, um, you, you could be open to possibly having that happen because it really is sort of the best approach for the students, in my opinion. Um, and the only, um, the last question I have maybe for Doug, like with this remote learning, um, model, you know, I just wanna make sure that, you know, um, it's very specific in terms of when the teachers are going to be available. Because I feel like in the spring, you know, nothing was really, um, set in stone and teachers were kind of, you know, creating all these remote, um, you know, Zooms classes all hours of the night and things like that. So I just wanna make sure that that isn't what is expected of the teachers, um, during the day.
It's a great segue. I mean, if we wanna dig into the next slide that has all those details, it's, it's a great segue.
Can I ask one more question about scheduling?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I can't see the Zoom screen yet.
That's okay, no, I didn't raise my hand, it's my fault. So, um, I know we're doing kind of a, a set week schedule now. Was there ever any consideration in doing two days on, two days off, two days on, two days off? Where it's kind of a six-day schedule anyway? Or did we wanna keep the schedule the same every week for our planning purposes for parents? I just wanted to see if that was a consideration or not. Some schools are doing two days on, two days, two days off, meaning two days in class, two days remote, two days in class. Doesn't matter what day, it, it changes every week. Just curious if that was a consideration or not.
So, I, I can, I can share with you, Mike. I've, I've interacted with about sixty superintendents over the past two weeks. I haven't heard two days on, two days off. You know, we've heard every other week, um, which I, we looked, we discussed that and, and I think the feeling there was that there's just such a giant gap in time. You know, and the, and the two days, in the, the two-one-two model that we're, we're working with at the secondary level um, is, is pretty common. A number of districts are, are going with that model, um, and they feel like that's something that they can work with. A few of our surrounding districts are going with the every other week, and I understand their reasoning behind that. Um, but it just seems like such a tremendous gap in time to kind of get kids into routine when they might potentially be out of school for nine or ten days.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on that. I, St. John's is the one that I've heard that's doing it, Doug. It's the only one I've heard too, to be honest with you. I don't know if other private schools are. Chris, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I hear it's a, but different question, and it kind of revolves around all schools. Um, and, and I, I guess there's some questions out in the public about what are we gonna do about, uh, testing for staff and students and how often is that gonna be done and what's, what, do we have a plan for that?
So that's gonna be something that we discuss in an upcoming slide, but now's as good a time as any, Chris, right? And, and so, um, one of the things, you know, for example, when the, when Wakefield reopened, um, they made it available for all employees to be tested on a voluntary basis if they so wished. And so I think the plan in talking both with Steve Mayo and Ruth Clay would like to replicate that for school personnel as well. And so, but then, then that naturally leads into, um, this kind of idea about, um, how do we do contact tracing? Um, how do we handle symptomatic students or adults in schools? Um, and, and I can talk about that when we get to that slide, if that's okay, Chris. All right?
Uh, Colleen had, looks like she has one more question.
Yeah, it might be in a different slide, um, under special education, but I had a question more directed towards, uh, for Adam and Amy at the high school in the Galvin, um, when it comes to IEP services. Uh, are we hoping to, um, service, uh, the students who are on IEPs? Uh, I would imagine you, we wanna do this in person, but that may not be possible with the schedule that we have. So are we looking at a combination of remote services when appropriate? Um, so what, what can they look forward to, you know, in terms of their services? And obviously, their IE plant, IEP plans have been changed remarkably, like since the spring. But how are we gonna kind of bring that back together in terms of their services and when they're receiving them?
Yep, um, I can speak to that at the high school. Um, I, we are looking to, um, provide, uh, those services in person. Um, and, uh, Mary Beth Evert, who is our, uh, special education coordinator at the high school, is actually looking at IEPs right now, um, to see how they, they mesh with our new rotation of our schedule. Um, so LSCs fit into the rotation, uh, so students have their learning support services. Um, and then, um, other services that, uh, depending on the frequency of those LSCs, um, it may be something that we need to offer. We have those, those ninety minutes, um, split into two forty-five minute blocks after lunch where students are going to be, different groups of students will be staying on different days. Um, that is not our first, um, pass at where we'd like, um, special education supports to go, but that is another option. Um, so we are currently looking at that. Um, and then also, the other thing that's shifting in our schedule is the blocks are longer. So if you have a ninety-minute block and you're getting, uh, or an eighty-minute block, sorry, and you're getting services in that block, um, does that then change the needs in the IEP? And that's an individually decided, student-by-student kind of situation. And so we're looking at that now. But, um, we're hoping that all of our services, or at least most of our services, um, are able to be provided there. And then the question of when kids are remote on those days, could they come in, in the afternoon for those services? Is a question we're looking at, at now as well. So we are exploring that. I don't have full answers just yet.
No, that's, that's good for now, thank you.
And, and Colleen, my answer would be identical to Amy's. I mean, we're anticipating providing, uh, as many in-person services as possible uh, in the way that we're grouping and scheduling students. And then we're looking at their off days on what, you know, what we can provide as well. Uh, and I, you know, it's our next step, so it's just gonna be more increased conversations, communication with specific families.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
I have one other question for Doug. Um, Doug, and you and I had a brief conversation on this a little while ago. So let's assume for argument's sake, we do go ahead with the hybrid approach.
Yep.
What criteria there would cause us to rethink that and perhaps go to a remote model?
Um, so obviously, if the governor, um, called for all schools, as he did this past spring, to close down, that would be one. The other would be, um, kind of a, a local decision. So for example, this past March, Mike, we shut down ahead of the state, right? And so, you know, some districts are, are working, um, in, in different ways to look at, you know, um, the data. Look at, they want kind of science and the data to guide whether they're in or out of school. And, and we're absolutely open to that conversation. Um, for example, the transmission rates here in Wakefield, you know, are point eight-three percent, so we're below one percent. So it's, that's pretty darn good. I don't know, um, if we can keep it in, in that area, I think we'll, we'll be in pretty good shape. Um, and so the, the, what would cause us to go full remote would be obviously a call from the governor or a call from my office as we did this past spring. Right? And so, and, and this touches on, I think, th- this intersects with Chris's question as well, which is, you know, what happens if you have a, an adult or a student that's symptomatic, right? So, and how do you handle that at the school level? What do you do? And so, no matter what the, um, the numbers are, what our transmission rates are, if we have, um, students that, or adults that are symptomatic, either in school or outside of school, um, what we will do is figure out who came in contact with that student or with that adult. Um, and then we will respond accordingly. We have very detailed guidelines from the Department of Education. Um, we think, you know, we're gonna make that, that document only better and more user-friendly, right? Because, uh, we have Mary Doherty, our district nurse coordinator, working collaboratively with Kelly Whaley. Um, they're on our district reopening team. Um, but they're also kind of heading up, um, a group of nurses where they are going to go through, um, the DESE guidance. And we're gonna kind of create our own document for Wakefield so it's crystal clear about, you know, what we're, what we're doing and how we're gonna do it. Um, and even with that, Mike, if there is an exception that's not defined in, in the kind of the guidelines or the plan, we're of the guidelines or the plan, we're going to be pretty conservative, right? We're going to be pretty conservative. For example, the guidance from the Department of Education talks in a very detailed way about, you know, if someone is symptomatic and they come within 10 feet of someone else for a given period of minutes. And so a conservative approach to that would be, we're going to look at that as an interaction or someone coming in contact, you know, we're not going to break out the ruler and say it was seven feet, not eight feet, and it was nine minutes, not seven minutes. Like, we're just going to say that, we're going to be conservative. We're going to say if, if, if you're symptomatic and you came in contact with X number of people, those people are going home to quarantine, right? And we will kind of hook them up or connect them with our Board of Health and we will support them in, in any way we can to kind of provide whatever we can for them, whatever they need while they're out. And so that's, that's a very, it's a, it's a short answer to a more detailed conversation.
Sure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions before Doug and Kara move on to the next section?
I have two quick questions about the schedule. So Monday holidays, so there's a lot of Monday holidays, right? Columbus Day, well, Veterans Day isn't always a Monday.
No, yeah.
But how are we handling holidays, especially when you talk about cohorts that are like the fifth, sixth grade that are Monday, Tuesday? Or the cohort in high school that, that's, that's one of their days that they're in person? Has there been any discussion about that?
There has. There has not at, at the reopening team level, but there has been discussion and, in terms of talking about the calendar.
Yeah.
Right? And so one of the things that we need to do, and I, and I loved what Adam Collantoni said, which is, you know, this is a starting point for us, right? And, you know, we've, we've gotten several email already from the document and email that we released from earlier today, and we've gotten questions like if we start in a hybrid model and things continue to get better, could, will we expand that? Absolutely. The, absolutely, right? If we start in a hybrid model and, you know, we're working with teachers and students and we are, we are learning a better way to support learning, then are we going to make that change? Absolutely, right? So this is not, this is a way for us to start school, right? And so this is a way for us to start school. This is a beginning. And so that's something that I, I think Adam pointed out in his comments about the schedule, but that's, that's an important piece.
Okay. So for parents that are asking that question, we've got to take another look at the calendar.
We do.
My, my secondary question to that was the PD days that were already scheduled in the existing calendar. If all of the PD days are happening on the front end, does that mean, mean none of the PD days are happening during the year? Or do you build in a couple of those because you might still need them? But it, it sounds like there's an overall discussion that needs to be had around the calendar in general.
So I, I will just answer the question quickly in regard to professional development days. The commissioner made the school year 170 days and he's asked us to take 10 at the beginning of the year and block those and use all 10 to prepare adults to come back and students to come back into school safely. And so that's 10 days. We have two additional days that we have built in at the start of the school year. We're not going to add those to the 10. We're going to kind of put those in our pocket and kind of think about if, if the, you know, if our plans shift or we need more time or we need to do some professional development, we might try to work that day in later in the calendar year. But we will put that in the calendar for families as a placeholder, but that's, it could, it's subject to change based on the learning model that we're in, right?
So that's two days, but there's a bunch of half-days also in there.
It includes the half-days as well.
Okay.
So, right?
So parents don't need to worry about half-days on top of an already shortened learning day?
I mean, I think in addition to the calendar, I mean, I think as a, as a district, we need to rethink professional development in general. Like, gone are the days of gathering large groups of teachers into a space or, you know, I think there's a lot we need to think about too. And we've tried to be careful with the 10 days that the commissioner has given back to districts in terms of calling that professional development. I think, you know, we really, that's really time for teachers to
Prepare.
get back in, prepare and really think about safety protocols first. I think we have to be conscientious of how, you know, our teachers are going to come back and, you know, the, the many emotions with that and just the headspace for professional development. I think we, we do, we will want it to be probably pretty interest-based in terms of what, we've been talking a lot, a lot about what teachers need at this point to start back at school and then, you know, plan accordingly. But I, I do think that PD is just going to look really different this year.
Agreed.
In general. And I think one of the pieces that I think you see in all the schedules is administrators really focused on when kids are in the building, let's focus on kids and let's focus on our students. And we've, we've really let go a lot of, of the, you know, not that we had a lot of space holders in the, in the days, but, you know, you talked about Amy saying high schools giving up ASCs, which would in large part be, you know, study periods or, we're really focused on having a lot of time on learning when, when kids are in the building. And so any planning, PLCs, PD opportunities, we're going to try to get outside of those student schedules.
I appreciate the distinction between those first 10 days not being PD.
Yeah.
I appreciate you making that distinction because it, it's important for all of us to think of it that way.
Yeah.
We need to give teachers time to get back and to reorient and to think, and it's not PD. That's not, that's not at all PD. That's about preparation.
Right.
It, it is going to be preparation, but there is, we, we do need to squeeze some professional development in there.
Okay.
And I do think we're going to collaborate with teacher leaders to do that. I think we might do some equity, diversity and inclusion work.
Yep.
Right?
Certainly techni, technology training.
I think we're going to, there's going to be some technology stuff. So, so professional development, it might feel like, and I know Chris is raising his hand, it might feel more like training than professional learning. Chris?
During August, you know, teachers are allowed back into their rooms to prepare their rooms. Is that just not going to happen this year and that's what these 10 days are for?
So the plan, and something that we're working on right now, Chris, is, and we're working with Bob Shiroli around trying to create a calendar, predictable calendar of when we can let teachers back into the building. But, but we also need to do that with structure. So teachers are, so, so many of our teachers have taught so long with, with so many of their colleagues, you know, things like social distancing and safety is, is going to be an adjustment. I think our kids are going to rock with this pretty well and it's going to be more of an adjustment for the adults. But we're looking to do it, Chris, well before September 2nd so adults can get in. So yes. But it won't be like it, they've gotten it in the past, won't be that type of schedule. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Do we want to allow our principals to sign off or do you think they should be in?
Yeah. So Kara just made a, a great point. I, you know, it's, it's about nine o'clock. I just wanted to just ask our principals if they have any closing remarks and we can let you guys sign off and, and then Kara and I can, and Christine and Bob can finish the slideshow. Or the presentation. Any, any closing thoughts?
Thank you very much.
Very helpful.
Thank you guys.
We're going to bring their questions tonight, thoughtful questions. I know we have a, a large audience watching. All of our principals, we're just excited to get our school communities back and we just, we need a starting point and there's a lot of information to digest and, and these plans are very fluid, but we need a starting point to just think about recreating our communities in our schools. So just appreciate the time tonight and we look forward to meeting with our school communities this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we move?
Yep. So, oh, Chris, did you have another question or are you waving?
I'm muted.
Okay, so I think we can move on.
All right. So we'd just like to move ahead in the slideshow. So the third plan that we created was a remote plan and, and, you know, one of the things, one of the questions that came up, Amy asked this question about schedules and how critical schedule, schedules are. You'll see at kind of halfway down the slide, we've shared this and we've used this exact language. You know, things for a remote instruction model will be more robust in the fall now, right? As the remote part, either as a standalone or as the part of our hybrid model, right? It needs to be, schedules need to be predictable, routine for, and routines for families and students, right? Communication needs to be more consistent. Technology tools need to be more accessible. And so, and I know Christine is going to talk a little bit more about technology, but I, I feel like in our, I feel like we've covered almost all of this. I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of the bullets on this slide. I, I feel like we've, we've talked at least once or twice about every one of them.
Hey Doug?
Yes, sir.
One thing that it kind of, kind of gnaws at me is this remote learning academy description. It's almost like we're segregating these people into a different bucket.
Yep.
You know, it just doesn't feel right. They should all be somehow brought together. So I don't know, you really want to have a specific program for that or just say there are kids that are doing remote. Just, I don't know, something bothers me about that.
Yeah. And, and so it, I'm glad you made that distinction, Mike, because I don't know that that's clear for our viewers at, our viewers at home, right? And so in, in addition to the plans that districts and superintendents and administrators were asked to create, these three plans, the Department of Education has also said that parents have a right to just say, to just opt out of a plan and say, I'm going to, I'm going to go remote. And then it's up to the district to figure out how to structure, what that might look like, right? And so it's a, it's a, so conceptually, I think when us calling it a remote academy is just a way to try to create a structure, Mike, and not to segregate or create something different, but just to try to create some structure around if a student is in a hybrid, we, we, they're, we're accounting for them differently than if a student is in a remote model, right? And so, and the other part of this, Mike, is that districts are not being given additional money to hire a whole new remote faculty, right? And so it's, it's, we're trying to kind of balance with the resources that we have to create services that are really improved over what we did last spring, right? So it's not meant to segregate. So just, just a little bit of information behind that, but...
I just, that, that age group has a sensitivity to getting, having labels attached to them.
No, I...
And I think you don't want to do anything to make it negative.
Yeah. Point, point is well taken.
Good point.
You know, but, but again, just to be clear, our remote, the students that will be opting into a remote, full remote plan will range from K through 12, right? So just, just an FYI, and we'll be able to report more on that.
And Doug, for clarity, they will not be assigned to teams, hybrid teams, with hybrid teachers. They are going to be experiencing through, with different instruct, instructors that are all online in a different schedule with different teachers than the hybrid teachers. So it's not like they're zooming in to a, a class that's being
Yeah.
taught live, because we've already determined that that's really difficult and isn't necessarily a, a thing that teachers are, I, I had a conversation with a middle school teacher about this and she's like, it is really hard to teach a class and teach kids remotely at the same time. Like, that is a real skill.
And then you have the, you know, you have the privacy and the confidentiality piece to consider, but one of the things that we talked about, and, and Mike, you're right, we, we're still, you know, first of all, we have to figure out who our population is, is going to choose this. And we've, we've been taking many phone calls from parents who are either choosing, are really kind of struggling, do I go the homeschool route, which would mean unenroll, create my own program, go by my own schedule, or see what the district has to offer on the remote side of things? So, so we're talking that through with families as they're making those decisions. But one of the things that we talked about was, was still giving, you know, every student a spot on a team because we're not sure that we're prepared to say, you know, you can't flex back in if your family feels like you're ready to come back now. Like, if there's nervousness in the start of the year and your family chooses full remote, we don't want to box people out and say, you know, I, I think just philosophically, we don't feel good about that right now, to say, you know, you choose this, you choose it for the year, there's no way out. Because I think everybody, right, we keep saying everyone has to be flexible, so we have to be flexible too.
Yeah.
And so that's where we talked about, you know, giving all of our kids spots on a team if, if they may choose to return.
That's great. That was kind of a, another question I had was, can you flex in and out?
Right. Well, it's, well, we don't want students flexing in and out, like at their leisure.
Yeah. Not that flexible.
But we, but we do want to make space, right? And so, but this for us, in, in regard to our planning and our thinking, is, falls in the same line with questions about special education, right? And so if we're on, you know, a middle school plan or a high school plan that is a 2-1-2, you know, student, one cohort in Monday, Tuesday, and one cohort in Thursday, Friday, you know, if we have a student that has, is in a special education program or has needs, that student might be in, in school more than just the two days, right? I mean, we need to think a little bit more expansively around, you know, the needs of kids. So this falls into the equity kind of line or of thinking, right? Which is, you know, the redistribution, the reallocation of resources is not enough, right? And so, and so we're, we're thinking about really, how do we get to kids and what success are they having? And so, and I'm really pleased that, with all the principals that spoke tonight talked about, you know, Amy McLeod talked about high school being different than middle school, but also talked about making time at the beginning of the day just to get eyes on kids and check in with kids, right? That's not a small thing and a lot of high schools are not doing that, right? It's like instructional minutes, instructional minutes, instructional minutes. So, and I, and I think at every level that's being prioritized. And so that's just a little bit more information in regard to what kind of some of the underpinnings are behind our planning, right? So I, I think...
Yeah, I think we can skip it. And I think we can be brief on this slide as well. We just wanted to, to touch upon the technology. And I've talked to the committee, I think at, at our last meeting, we touched upon, and it's within the reopening doc as well, just the need, the priority for us to do less, better. We really te, broke down what instructional tools and platforms we felt were most effective and we're trying to create that consistency for staff and students. And, you know, I just really wanted to commend the work that, that Christine did in terms of the budget in the spring, really helping us to prioritize those technology tools. So Christine, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Just briefly, all of these plans hinge on a significant investment in technology. So we were looking at, to date, we've purchased over 1,000 devices, Chromebooks, charging cots, iPads, laptops, trying to meet all, all students at different levels. We've also purchased Zoom licenses for everyone in the district, Google Classroom. Also happy to report, we were a recipient of the technology grant. We found out this weekend, this week. So we received about $66,000 in addition to the investments we've made to date. So we're going to be spending that probably this week. It goes so fast. But yeah, so we've been working for curriculum, for devices, but it's really to support the, the synchronous learning and the asynchronous learning. Now, of course, there's some training that has to go along with that, but more to come for that. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Mike has. Mike has a question.
Christine, Christine, so how are you feeling about our budget at this point?
So we're lucky that we received the CARES Act grant. We received a couple of, you know, but, you know, we have more work to do.
Yep. I know we're trying to get money from the state.
Right.
For all this stuff.
The commissioner has talked about more federal stimulus money coming, so we haven't heard definitely. And the state really hasn't, hasn't even set their budget yet. So, you know, we still have to, you know, we have a, a final number right now for Chapter 70. We look like we've been level funded in that respect and we just, we're applying for every grant that's out there, everything that we can, that we can try, but, you know, we're hoping to do the best we can. I see that Chris has a question.
I had an email from Jason Lewis like yesterday that said our Chapter 70 was up like almost $900,000.
So the Chapter 70 was only up by $24,000. The $900,000 includes the CARES Act grant and the COVID relief grant.
Oh, they didn't word it.
I know. I know, I know. It made it look like chapter 70 was up, but it's not. It's one-time funding from the federal government.
It, it, it did look that way, Chris.
Right.
That was a little, little sleight of hand.
No.
Very well presented, but if you look a little deeper, not so much.
Credit for what it had, I didn't think of the email.
No?
It, it's on the Desi, it's on the Desi website, website by district, but yeah, they really drilled it down.
So we, we are also collaborating with Steve Mayo and, you know, the leaders on the town side. We're keeping track of, of all, all expenditures related to, uh, the pandemic and to kind of our modified schedule, right? And, and like Christine said, I don't, I don't think that she's really doing this justice, right? So we have a standing meeting with our finance subcommittee every Thursday morning. Again, we keep, we're applying for every grant, um, public grants, we're applying for private grants. You know, the Wakefield Education Foundation, um, has just granted us $25,000 to support us with technology. And so, which is really just, um, so amazing, you know? And, and so, um, we're, so we're, in terms of opening school, I think we're in good shape. We do need to pay very close attention, um, to our overall budget, and I think we should be good. I think there are questions, there are a lot, a lot more questions than answers right now around things like extracurricular activities, sports. You know, if, if, if we start school in a remote model, chances are pretty good that there will be no fall athletics or extracurricular activities. Um, and so, and that's going to be a significant loss for students and families. And, and I don't want to say to students.
Sorry, I assume if we start in a hybrid and we go to a remote, then all athletics will stop at that point in time too. Is that your best guess as well?
Right, well, I, you know, the commissioner, the governor and the commissioner both use the same, same language, Mike. When they say, if, if we're reopening and we're well enough to be in school, then it's a conversation about sports and extracurricular. But, you know, if, if we're, and, you know, and the other piece that, that is, that is, uh, that's real is, you know, who's initiating the remote, right? The, the idea that we go remote, you know? If we go remote because we need to because of the pandemic, or because the governor has required us to quarantine, that's a different situation than us simply starting in a remote, right? And so, and I think that that's viewed very differently, um, by the leaders at the Department of Education and, and the leaders at the state as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Right, so I think we can transition to the facilities and, um, safety preparation slide, which, um, we have Bob here to help us speak to some of those points.
Sure, thanks, Kenna. So to preface, uh, before I go through these bullets, everything we've been, um, preparing to do for facilities has been based off of safety and, and trying to make schools the safest place available for students, teachers, um, students, staff, and families, um, to return. So, uh, first and foremost, PPE, um, we've purchased roughly 12 weeks' worth of PPE and, and, you know, we'll reassess as, as if we come back on a hybrid model and as it moves forward. PPE that we've purchased is, you know, of course, in order to ensure the safety and wellness of staff, students, and families, we've, in, in accordance with CDC and DESI guidelines, we've purchased the supplies for the upcoming fall, but also been providing it to the staff and students in our summer school program at the Woodville. The PPE we've purchased has been disposable masks, disposable gloves, disposable gowns, face shields, hand sanitizer, disinfectant spray. So with all this, we'll be handing it out pretty much on a weekly basis as needed, um, when, when students and staff come back. We are going to be putting cleaning stations in each room throughout the school and at frequently used entrances, just so we have anything that people need to stay, uh, you know, healthy, user, user, hand sanitizer, and also make sure soap and everything is, is fully stocked in the bathrooms, um, for when people need to, to wash. Other notable items that we've also purchased has been touchless thermometers for the nurses and electrostatic sprayers. We're planning using the electrostatic sprayers, um, to do our deep disinfectant, I'll talk about that in our further bullet point. Um, we have purchased these for each school, has their own, um, so we don't have to worry about, um, sharing in, in that, that retrospect. These, uh, the electrostatic sprayers, they're not, they're not cheap, but then they're also very, very hard to come by, uh, at this point. So it's pretty good that we, we have them, um, on hand. As Doug mentioned earlier, we are increasing our custodial staff. We currently have two offers to candidates for one-year custodial positions. These additional roles will be valuable assets, um, to assist with the additional cleaning, disinfecting that will be needed moving forward. I guess one of the, one of the most popular questions that I've been getting has been, right, ventilation, air quality, and cleaning protocols, and, and I'll discuss those in the next two bullet points. So ventilation and air quality. We conducted, uh, indoor air quality testing, uh, by request through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Not that we knew COVID was going to happen, uh, but our foresight allowed us to conduct these IAQ tests prior to the outbreak. Um, we were able to do so in five of the seven schools. And we started at the high school in April of 2019, and our last test was a gallon on February 13th. Um, and, and in between these tests, we've also conducted the IQ test at Greenwood, Woodville, and Doyle. Um, we were planning on doing the other two schools, Dolbear and Walton, um, this spring, but unfortunately, uh, DPH is a, is pretty busy right now and can't get out to do that. So the two big, the, the IQ test, the two big suggestions that DPH suggested is, and this is even prior to COVID, is to open windows for fresh air for areas that don't have adequate HVAC ventilation, and also to not block Univens, right, the intake and the supply. So, and with, with the ventilation, air quality, the Wakefield DPW hired a new HVAC tech. He started about a month and a half, two months ago, and he's been assessing all the town buildings, including the school's HVAC systems, to ensure they're working to the best functionality. We, Doug and I, and, and we, and Christine, we have a standing meeting with the DPW to discuss HVAC and our reopening plans, and they've been great partners, um, helping us, uh, work through this.
I'd just like to chime in too, we've also purchased Plexiglas for all of the schools, for the main office, for the lunch, um, lines. And, um, Bob has also worked with all of the schools, um, for signage about social distancing, what areas to walk in, in certain ways for the hallways, so it's been quite a collaboration.
Will the hallways be one-way?
So we've purchased, do you want to speak to that, Bob?
Sure, for the plans, the, the high school is planning on doing one-way hallways. Um, all of the other schools are not, but we're going to put, uh, tape down the middle of the hallways to kind of make it similar to, to a road where you go, you walk one-way, um, while, while students are walking in the opposite direction.
Can I ask you a question that's related to that? How are we planning on monitoring or policing kids wearing masks and social just? Are we going to have hall monitors in the, in the middle school and the high school? Or, you know, you can't be going in the bathroom with, with the kids or anything of that sort? So are we planning on stepping up our monitoring of compliance with these kids in the hallways? I assume the teachers will do it in the classrooms.
So I, I think I could take that question, Mike. And so the, the plan would be that when students are passing, you know, teachers are present in the hallway and, and kind of attentive to students during unstructured times. You heard at the middle level that there's not going to be much passing. You know, at the high school, you know, teachers will be about to the, to the degree that they can be, and administrators certainly will be, right? And, and we are anticipating, Mike, that the kids are going to be really good rule followers, right? You know, I, I think we, you know, unless someone's doing a social protest, that they're not going to wear their mask and, 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 you know, and we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. I certainly don't want to prompt that, but, um, you know, we're assuming that, that kids know that they have a role in keeping themselves safe and keeping other people safe, and we think that they're going to act accordingly. You know, we, we have kids right now in our summer program, Mike, and, and all of them, all of them, to a person. They're, they fought, they're following the rules brilliantly. Now, they're only our younger guys, um, you know, but, but again, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. And, uh, you know, I, again, that kids understand pretty well that this is a pandemic and, and safety is critical. Um, and kids have taken direction pretty well, and I think, to be honest with you, I think that they're just so excited to be back in any way that they can be. I, I think it's, it's going to go well in regard to the students.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anyone wants to be the one who causes us to have to go back to remote.
Yeah.
Hopefully that will happen.
If, if I can just add to that too, one of the pieces of continued planning that we're talking about is related to our student handbooks, and we have student handbooks at every level, and, and the point of, of those handbooks is really, you know, to keep our schools and our community safe. And I think we all agree that there are going to be additional revisions to those handbooks for the 2021 school year, just to be thinking about how we partner with students and families to keep all of our, um, you know, our whole community safe. And again, you know, what we put in print, I think we're all realistic to know that if you put it in writing, you know, it's not, it's not as easy live in action, but I think, um, I agree with Doug that I think we'll have a lot of cooperation around that.
Yeah, you know, one of our drivers, I want to be completely clear, one of our drivers is high expectations for everyone that's in our system, right? And so I, I think that, you know, everyone knows that they're not coming back to the jobs that they left, right? And so everyone knows that, you know, and Rick Manzey, one of the WA leaders, likes to say, this is an all-hands event, right? This is not what we left, this is an all-hands event. And I, and it is, right? And so people are going to have to, um, do things differently, and, and our working theory, based on the work that we've done so far, is that people are, are more than willing, um, to really partake and to, to kind of create learning opportunities for kids in any way that they can, as long as it's safe. So, that's just a quick.
I just have one more question for Bob, um, in terms of, um, cleaning the bathrooms. Can you explain maybe how you plan to do that, and is there a program, uh, district-wide throughout the day?
Yeah, so, so we're working on those, and it, it really depends on each school's schedule, right? So we're going to have to close bathrooms down throughout the day as, as frequently as we can. We're going to have to look at the schedules, um, when students are in classrooms or, or what their, what their breaks are. So, so we're really going to have to try to do that, but one thing that we're, we're looking for and weighing on is a little guidance from the, from the state, um, and that's the, the Mass Facilities Association, um, we are, we're, that I'm involved in. We're looking at all the districts are trying to collaborate and, and come up with cleaning protocols that we could share statewide, so it's kind of not just this district, this district's doing this, that district's doing that. We're trying to collaborate together to, to, to get cleaning protocols, um, like you asked, Amy, I mean, right? What is the, what is the, the plan? But if we, if we are cleaning throughout the day, we're going to have to shut bathrooms down. And, and does that stop, um, students and staff from going to wash their hands more frequently, right? You have to ask that question as well. So there's, there's kind of a, a give and take on, on, on what you do with each protocol.
Great, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? All right, you can move on.
So we just have a few more slides. Um, our next slide up is, is about nurses and medical support. And so we, we are hiring, um, right now, we have a job posted for one additional nurse. Um, we've hired a nurse for our summer program, and we also have contracted with another, a second nurse to support our summer programming as well. And so over at Woodville, we're providing services to 41 students, um, and we have two nurses there, and, and our faculty and staff are there. We also have, um, students working there in the summer, supporting, um, classrooms as well. So that's gone exceptionally well. Um, I've talked a little bit about protocols and for symptomatic students, we'll be publishing that, we'll be putting that on our website. And so, um, as soon as we get that completed. And so in terms of contact tracing, that will not fall to our school nurses. Um, that will be done by the Board of Health. And, um, Ruth Clay joined our, our call earlier today, um, for our district reopening team, um, and will continue to be kind of a contact for us. And so, and we also, whenever we have questions, we don't kind of hesitate to call, um, the State Board of Health as well. And so we'll, we'll continue to do that. And so that's a quick there. Um, additional planning and consideration?
Doug, could I, only, only while we're on that private high slide, so we're in school, a kid says they don't feel well.
Yep.
Obviously, we're not going to know the symptomatic because they haven't been tested yet. What's the protocol going to be in our new environment about, or an adult for that matter?
Well, it de- depends what symptoms that they have, Mike. Not all symptoms are, you know, I think that there are, there are eight or 10 symptoms that, you know, we, we look for that are indicators of, of COVID, right? And so if we have a first grader that's down after snack, because, you know, they've eaten too much, then I think we need to kind of differentiate between what is, what is a symptomatic situation that we need to respond to. Uh, but if someone is symptomatic, Mike, um, we will, we would quarantine them in, in school. There's a, there will be a designated space to quarantine students. Um, they would be supervised, um, by, by, by our personnel until they are picked up. Um, and, and use the nurse, our nurses will be, um, wearing PPEs, right? And so if, if they know that a student is symptomatic, um, they'll, my guess is, and, and I haven't worked this out with Mary and Kelly yet, but they would probably increase the level of, of protection that they have on, um, while they're supervising the student, and make sure that the student kind of gets where they belong so that they can be tested and cared for. Um, and then the next part of that is we will figure out who that student came in contact with. And we would kind of make, kind of the, the option for them, not the option, but we would make it so that they can, they could, they too could quarantine for the 14-day limit, right? And so we would, and we would go from there, right?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Again, Mike, I'm giving a short answer to a more detailed scenario, and, and, and so we're, we're going to have more information on that. Okay? So additional planning considerations, the things that we're looking at. We are looking at, um, so additional time, um, studies to further refine cleaning, and so, um, thanks. So Bob will, um, this is kind of the time study piece, and so Bob will go over that. We're looking very closely at kind of professional learning for our Phase One in regard, what does, what does that 10 days look like? Uh, every time we talk to the Department of Education, they add something new to the 10 days. So we're, we're just really trying to prioritize, and we will work that out with our WEA leaders as well. And so, you know, transportation, um, the new guidance that we got from the state is really requiring that, that we prioritize who will be allowed to get on buses, right? In the past, we had, you know, over 400 riders on nine buses. And so now with our, we're still only have nine buses contracted to come to, to Wakefield, um, and they serve different schools, so they'll be cleaned in between runs. But with our social distancing requirements, um, we can, we're only going to be able to put, you know, 18 to 20 students on a bus that used to hold 57 students. So that's going to require us, like other districts, to prioritize who absolutely needs to be on that bus. And so obviously, we'll be providing transportation for special education students, um, who, who need that in their IEP. Um, and we will also be providing transportation for students in grades K through six that live two miles or more away from their, their homeschool. And so, and if, if we, if those restrictions are eased up, we would obviously add, um, more students to the bus as that becomes, um, a possibility for us. As I shared, we continue to consult with the Board of Health on schedules and protocols. The information that we're presenting to you, we've shared with them. It's kind of just like our graduation plans, just like any of our gathering plans, right? The information that we're sharing here has been seen by, um, by Ruth, and so Ruth Clay, that is. And so there's a lot of, of work and a lot of questions that, that we need to do. Our plan for kind of the, in the coming weeks, and certainly our plan leading up to our meeting on the 12th is going to be to, we're going to meet with cohorts of parents at the elementary, middle, and high school. We have three Zoom calls scheduled. Um, we might schedule another event if we can squeeze it in this week. Um, and we are going to go through all of the email that we get and all of the questions. We're going to group those questions together and create a frequently asked questions document and address, um, as many concerns as we possibly can, um, in the timeline before we come back on the 12th. And so in the plan for us to come back on the 12th, and I'm, and I've talked to Amy about this, is for us to make whatever adjustments that we need to make to our plans and to share those adjustments when we come back on the 12th and give. and to share those adjustments when we come back on the 12th, and give the committee an opportunity to endorse a plan, right? And so, and, and this is a critical piece, and, and we can talk more about this, but, you know, the school committee will be endorsing essentially a concept for us to start school. We know that what we start with, we may have to change in a moment's notice, and we know if things continue to trend in a positive direction, we would obviously expand as we, as we could do safely into a, a better, more robust model to meet the needs of students. And so, that's, that's the quick. In terms of closing remarks, I think, I, I hope that you can hear my words when I say this. You know, our administrative team, our teacher leaders, and I think I speak for most of, of the personnel who work for the Wakefield Public Schools. You know, we are absolutely committed, absolutely committed to provide learning opportunities with integrity and structure for all of our students. Like, that, that's our job right now. It doesn't matter what model we're in. Our job is to create learning opportunities for kids. Doesn't matter if we're in remote, hybrid, or in-person, right? And so, that's kind of our mindset, and that's how we're going at this. You know, the foundation of this commitment is, is really based on relationships, trust, and communication, which is more critical now than ever before, right? There's, everyone's so anxious, there's a lot of anxiety and fear and misinformation about, you know, what it means to come back, what it means not to come back. And so, we hope to be a resource, not only for the committee, but for the community to address questions that you might have to best support you and your children. So, that's it. I don't know if anyone has any final questions?
Tom?
Hi, so, first of all, certainly, thank you, Doug and Kara, and the entire team, all the principals that were with us earlier, and everyone that constituted the working groups throughout the summer to get us to where we are tonight. An incredible amount of work and credible thoughtfulness. One of the things I think that's most impressive to me is the level of thoughtfulness, and even Doug, in your closing remarks, talking about integrity and structure. Then that certainly, in my view, very much shined through in, in this work. I hadn't actually said anything earlier. My colleagues asked probably all, if not more, of the questions that I could even think of. But I did have a couple with, related to the last couple of slides, if I, if I may.
Of course.
One was about the, the technology piece. I know that Christine mentioned, one, we certainly got, when we're getting the $66,000 grant for technology, that's, that is, that is great news. So, congratulations on receiving that additional, additional grant. One of the things that, around technology, but it's also a larger picture question, which doesn't have to be part of tonight, but could be part of next week, is the sharing of the data from the survey with regard to the questions actually asked. I think it was tremendously important as part of tonight's presentation to share with us sort of the, the demographic breakdown of who responded, and, you know, what, from what schools, and what categories, and parents and staff, and so forth. And I think that was, that was incredible. I think the number of people that responded was also very impressive, which obviously speaks to the fact that lots of people in town, parents and others, are really paying attention to this, which is, which is critical news as well. So, one of my questions around technology are, is from the surveys, did we pick up anything? I know one of the survey questions, because I, as a parent, answered that question, or the survey rather. What did we pick up with regard to needs of either technology devices or lack of infrastructure in people's homes? That's something that, that I know that we're, we're, you know, certainly very open to providing devices. That's been part of our policy for years. We've, we've put an awful lot of resources and funding into devices in the last decade, never mind the last couple of years. So, if you could speak to what do we anticipate being some of the needs for technology supports for kids at home? And, and what, what sort of shined through from some of the, the survey data with regard to that?
Tom, I can jump in on that and just give, you know, I don't have the survey results right in front of me, but from going through it, I think we, we broke it out based on what families had access to for internet and whether or not they needed devices. I felt like the internet piece, I think we were at like 99% of respondents had access to internet in the home, so the internet connectivity piece wasn't as much of an issue. But devices, I think having the right device to connect to Zoom, if there was multiple children in the home, you know, that could be challenging, and I know that we met some of those needs within, within the spring, too. And we worked with families to distribute as many Chromebooks as we could, which I think was well over 100, Christine, if I'm correct, in the spring. So, we, we responded to all kinds of requests, whether, you know, people didn't have a device at all in the home, or maybe, you know, needed an additional one. We loaned those out as well. And I anticipate, you know, with the priorities that we've made in terms of purchasing technology, that we'll continue to work with families based on, on their needs within the homes and distribute as many as we can.
Great, and I think that, that, that is, is, is certainly great news and wonderful news. I want to make sure that in the process, we are completely open and constantly reminding parents and students of the availability for technology. I think it's entirely appropriate, you know, in the big picture that we raise the bar on ourselves. We raise the bar on our teachers, and we're of course raising the bar on the students as far as being able to provide the best education within the confines of the safe environment that we can. And if technology is one of those things that is becoming an obstacle, we want to, we have the means to not have that. Be as big an obstacle as possible, so I'm thrilled to hear that, to hear that answer. One of the things, if we could, again, not, not tonight, because I appreciate, one, the hour, and, two, it wasn't part of the agenda, so I don't mean to complicate that. But if, if you could share with the committee and perhaps the community as a whole what some of the responses to this, to the survey was. I'm not interested necessarily in digging in to the aggregate data or doing any data mining, per se, that's for sure. I don't want to exaggerate that point. But I think it's important for all of us to share in the results that the community obviously responded, the school community responded in, in earnest to, to what we've asked for, for survey questions. And I would, I'd love to see, and I bet my colleagues would as well, love to see what the results of some of that, some of those survey results were. Next, next topic is transportation, for Doug or Christine or anyone, really. I fully appreciate, Doug, during your remarks on transportation in the last slide, or second to last slide, that there are certainly, you know, there were, there were limitations. We, there were limitations within our contract with the bus company. There were limitations within our requirements. There were limitations in what we're obliged to do, right? Is this one of those, I know that also, the transportation was a survey question out there, so it's, it's probably gonna be a little bit on the heels of the, the last type of, you know, what data we may have collected with regard to transportation needs. One, are we anticipating more transportation needs than, than we're prepared for? And I just don't mean cutting the number of riders by more than half. I mean, do we think we may have been receiving more requests for transportation this year than, than in the past? And, you know, and/or is there any possibility of, with the bus company, the possibility of increasing the number of, of buses and, that we may have available to provide transportation in the district? You know, we are, you know, obviously going forward with some of the models, some, one of the models presented, if not a combination of all of them, and transportation is gonna be a critical piece. We need to get the kids, you know, into the building safely, and perhaps as importantly, if not more importantly, because of the varying times of day, get the kids home safely. So, transportation is, is my second question, then I'll hop into my third, and then I'll let you answer, Doug. My third question is, could you speak to, what is the DESI review and approval process? I know that you had to submit the plans ahead of tonight's meeting, which is entirely reasonable. We're gonna be voting next week, at which you'll inform the commissioner of that result. What do we, what can we then expect from, from DESI with regard to their review and approval process? Thank you.
Sure. So, we're hearing that the Department of Education is going to give us feedback on the preliminary text that we provided in terms of what plan we would like to come back in. So, so the, we've, so these slides that we presented this evening, we've summarized that in a very short amount of text. So, the Department of Education asked us for a preliminary, or a draft of, of the feasibility work that our reopening teams had, had done. And we provided that last Friday, okay? And it was really, it's a form tool that the Department of Education used. And so, it's literally like you're checking boxes. It's like taking a survey. Checking boxes where there were fill-ins, you could only put in so much text, 300 words, you know? So, it's, it's a, a far condensed version of the, the report that we shared with the community today, and we shared with the school committee yesterday, right? And so, so that, we provided them that. They, they have shared with us that they're gonna provide us feedback on the information that we've provided. And then, and then in terms of our plan, so, plans are due to the, to the Department of Ed the first, really, the first two weeks in August. August 10th is when they're asking for them. You know, I've shared with Jeff Riley that our school committee is voting on the 12th. He said, "Not a problem. You can get it to me, you know, after your vote on the 13th or the 14th." And so, that's, that's our plan right now. But in terms of them giving us feedback on the final plan, you know, I think the questions that they're gonna have are things are, are around accountability and, and what plan we will be starting in. And so, we are, we are kind of hearing that they're kind of, they will do whatever they can to support districts to get students back into schools. And so, and so I think that they're, they will be very flexible to try to support districts to help us get back. If, if districts are starting in a remote plan, not because of the spread of the virus or because the governor has required us to, to quarantine, I think that they're gonna be a little bit more parochial in what they're going to be asking us to do and understanding why we need to do that and how we are really providing the best service for our kids. So, we might get additional feedback if we were to start in the plan other than hybrid. But that's basically what we're hearing right now. In terms of next week, Tom, what we will be required to do, again, I think what we would be asking of the committee, and, and this legal counsel has also kind of provided us a perspective on this, to kind of take the pressure off of the committee a little bit, is to say that, that the committee is endorsing a concept, right? They're endorsing a safe return to school. Safe, again, safety is, is critical. They're, they're endorsing a safe return to school in a model that they can, they think can best serve children. That's it, right? And so, and if we need to adjust our elementary model to a 2-on-2, or we're getting some feedback on sound. I don't know if that's, it stopped. So, if, whatever adjustments we need to make, we'll adjust that and go from there. But each adjustment or each iteration does not need to be rehashed at school committee and reapproved. And so, at least that's the guidance that we're getting right now. And so, and in regard to your question about transportation, Tom, we, we can have some hard numbers in our next meeting to talk about who we're, we, we did kind of an initial registration. And so, we can kind of collect those numbers and present those next week. And in regard to your first question about technology, it's a great question. I think Kara answered what the survey data said. I think the next kind of level of that for us is verifying the information that has come through on the surveys. For example, does, you know, 100% of our kids having wireless, what does that mean, right? Does that mean they're using their cellphone as a hotspot to do homework, right? I would argue that that's not what we would want them to do, right? So, but it's just verifying and then filling in from there. But there's plenty to do between now and next week.
There most certainly is, and I certainly didn't mean here at the last minute as the meeting winding down to, to, to ask more of you. But I certainly very much appreciate everything that your remarks, the presentations that you gave tonight. One thing that comes, you know, glaring through, at least for me, was you and your team's focus on kids, on students, on safety, and what's on best for the education, social, emotional education of students. While certainly things can come around to, to make improvements with regard to scheduling, convenience for parents, and other things of that, your primacy on, on education for students and safety is very much appreciated, both from my perspective as a committee member and as a parent. So, I want to thank you all for the tremendous amount of work that went into what you presented tonight, and certainly look forward to whatever input we're gonna get over the next week.
Our school-based, thank you, Tom. Thank you for your kind words. You know, we, we, at the district level, need to thank, genuinely thank everyone that participated in our surveys. You know, we do think we're gonna need to get out another round of surveys to understand more of what the community will need. We also want to genuinely thank our principals and our reopening teams and the teacher leaders that have spent the last four weeks contributing so thoughtfully to the documents that we presented tonight. So, thank you.
Doug?
Yeah, yes, sir.
As much as I'm concerned over all the work you have to do between this week and next week, I'm more concerned with the work you have to do from next week till the beginning of September, and just a sense of how prepared you are, whether it's remote or hybrid. Are you feeling okay, or are you real nervous? Are you gonna need other things to get it done on time?
So, I don't, it is, right? So, I'm trying to think, what's the right answer to that question? Thanks, Mike. Thanks. That's us, that's not a softball to hit. Right, no, no. We usually end the meeting with a softball, Mike. Someone's gotta coach up the new guy. No, to honestly, I, I don't think we're nervous as much as we're really eager and excited to get kids back, right? So, when, when kids come back, it changes everything, right? Kids come back, it changes everything. Having kids, just 41 kids in our summer program, summer services, and a shortened day, shortened week at Woodville has kind of changed how people are feeling about the possibility to be back. You know, I spoke with Kathy Juva today, who's working in the summer program, who's been amazing. You know, Bev Elsowitz and Tammy are running that program, you know? You know, these women could run a small country, you know? I mean, they're, they're amazing, and, and they're, they're just, but what, what kind of brings them back, right, are the kids. It, it brings us all back, right? And so, you know, so to answer your question, I think we're eager, excited, but, but we also, it's not missing us that there's a lot of boxes to check, yeah, right? But in, but I will say that in looking at the calendar with the 10 days that are added to the front of the school year, that gives us more time, right? That gives us more time, and, and to be honest, I'm grateful to have it, right? Because if we look at that 10 days, we're potentially at, you know, the earliest we would have students back, again, we need to kind of work on the calendar, but the earliest we could have students back is the 18th of September. That's the earliest, right? And if we do, if we expand Phase Two to get, you know, smaller cohorts or smaller groups of students into our schools to meet people, to acclimate before we welcome back larger groups in a hybrid model, it's, you know, you're probably talking a few weeks after that. So, it might be, you know, September 28th or the first week in October. You know, so, so we do have some time, but we are gonna be busy. And, and I will tell you, I, I have no problem saying this, you know, our plan is to address every question that comes across our screen, right? And so, we're gonna go through every email, and we will address every question. And we will kind of share an FAQ doc, and we will come back to this, to this group and report accordingly. report accordingly. And like I said, you know, I said this in our, earlier, if we can't, if we don't feel something's safe, or if we feel we can't meet the expectation and safety needs of faculty and staff, we're not doing it, right? So, but we are super excited to have kids back. I don't want to, Kara, I don't know if you have, is that close?
Absolutely. You could have everything.
So, yeah, there you go.
I think half of the parents on the call just passed out when you said September 28th, though.
Yeah.
They're hoping it's a lot earlier than that, I'm sure.
Well, I think we all are, Mike. You know, I think we all are, but you know, with the 10 days and potentially a modified start, you know, that's the window, right? Like I said, if the earliest is September 18th, you know, that's a Friday and, you know, the following week, we have holidays, there's a lot, lot happening. September's packed. So, more to follow. I don't want to make people more anxious, but thank you for the question.
Well, thank you, Doug. And I think if I can move on with the agenda, just a quick announcement about future dates. Our next meeting obviously is scheduled for Wednesday, August 12th at 7:30. And lastly, on the agenda, our school committee comments. Chris, would you like to go first?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Mike?
I've said enough. I'm done.
Thank you, Tom.
In the following, the established protocol, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Colleen? You're on mute.
I feel like I should say I'm all set. You guys will forgive me. I have a lot to say, but we have time to say it over the course of the next few weeks. But I just wanted to sort of put forth something that helps me kind of get through times like these that are tough times. And I've been so inspired, not only by my colleagues and the administration, the district, state-level conversations that we've all been involved in, but really looking to people's creativity, flexibility, perseverance, the pivoting. You see it in restaurants, you see it in corporations, you see it in organizations where people step forward and, you know, when you're kind of failing down and out about these things, I think that you kind of just look to reach to those things to be inspired by, because this is all so daunting. And for me, just passing through, you know, whether on social media or you're reading something online, it just helps to kind of pull those stories out and it may seem like common sense, but I think that we can get wrapped up in the complications of all of this and the fear. But, you know, working together, I do believe, and just looking at our nucleus right here, we work together and we solve problems and we get things done. And I think we do it step by step and then we move to the next step. And I am so inspired by all of you, each and every time that we meet, learning so much. And I just wanted to put that out there and that's how, that's how we attempt everything that we do, I think, is just doing the best we can and working together. So, I appreciate that and thank all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Colleen. Well said. Thank you. Suzy?
So, I feel the need to support Mike Boudreau's kind of comment right there at the end around the, is that, is the phased calendar going to look longer, right? I think Kara, you kind of indicated when we went through that schedule, that slide, that maybe those dates wouldn't look the way that they looked. Doug, you just said it again. I think there, there's a lot of angst in the community by working parents of how are they going to manage this? And yet, I so support all of the work that you guys have done. I think hearing about it in more depth tonight just made me feel more confident that it's the right plan. But I also know how very difficult it is going to be for many parents to figure out how to manage. And yet, I heard a lot of comments from the principals and from you both of, we're going to try to be as flexible and we're, you know, we're willing to kind of relook at this. But I think it's the most important thing for everyone to remember that kids came first in this, right? Kids and the way that kids need to learn and the best way for kids to learn at each level, which is why every plan is different at each level, and that safety came next. And safety is really important for student and staff and that has to be at the forefront. And that, it could be that they're both on the same. For me, it feels like it's kids first, it's safety, and it is based on feedback from parents, right? That the elementary schedule looks the way that it does because elementary parents in the spring said, "We can't be responsible for teaching our children. We're not elementary school teachers." And so, I just, I feel like we're in a tough position in trying to support those working parents because the, what is being proposed will be very difficult for people to manage. And how we balance that and how we get back, you know, as quickly as possible while also balancing everything, I just, I feel like we've got to remember that this is going to be difficult for a lot of parents to manage logistically and how we support that, it just needs to also be kind of top of mind.
I'm just thinking about our day tomorrow and just how we've set up our weeks and tomorrow is our day to check in with each of the building, reopening reps, administrators at a minimum. And I'm just, you know, between the, I think the emails that we've received already, the feedback we've heard tonight, I think we have a lot of talking points to go in. And that's, and that was our point in all of this too. You know, as Doug said, we're putting out a concept, we're putting out what we think educationally is best for kids at every level. I think we've been in education long enough to know if we push out a general schedule from central office and tell everyone to follow it, it's probably going to fall pretty flat. So, we really felt it was important to give the buildings, the people who know their buildings, they know their students, they know their staff, you know, just a huge role in this to tell us what really could logistically work. But that's not to say that we don't have more work to do. And I think, you know, like Doug said, we're taking the feedback, we're listening to all of the questions and concerns and we'll be doing some more troubleshooting tomorrow, I anticipate, in our meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzy. Yeah, lastly, I just want to thank you all so much for the work, all the hard work you've done. I mean, clearly, you and your reopening teams have worked tirelessly. I mean, the presentation tonight was so thorough and, you know, I really just feel like you're, the fact that you're mindful of student needs, parent needs, teachers' concerns, I mean, it's on the forefront. So, I just appreciate it greatly, you know, and I do think it's a one day at a time at this point, because every minute, it seems like some, you know, when I talk to you, Doug, from one day to the next, it's, the whole story has changed. So, you know, I just, you know, have faith that you and your teams will do what's best, but also regrouping, like you said, tomorrow and, you know, engaging parents, which is what you plan to do for the rest of this week, and then obviously reaching out to teachers to make sure, you know, they're comfortable and they can give some insight as well. I just think it's an overall team effort and I really appreciate it. So, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of August 4th, 2020.
Act One. Thank you. Roll call vote. Judy?
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
The Callerman? Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
And Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Thank you so much. That adjourns the meeting and I hope you all have a great night. Thank you so much for tuning in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. 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 Thank you.